Are we ready? Okay, good evening. Welcome to our city council meeting for, where are we at? November 19th, 2019. It is 6:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Mayor Ottega.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Lauer.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Koch.
Here.
Councilmember Applegate.
Here.
Councilmember Geek.
Here.
All seven members present.
Okay, thank you. We are gonna go ahead and get moving. It's a kind of a short meeting. We got a few cards for public comment. And some things going on, so we'll try to be efficient tonight and see if we can get everyone home. Item number four, no presentations. We have an appointment tonight for one member to the Recreation Facility Advisory Committee. Ms. Huffman?
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, Ms. Tamara Estes has stepped down from her position on the Recreation Facility Advisory Committee to fulfill her obligations as a city council member, and so we are recommending a replacement of that position by Mr. Gordon Rick.
Okay. Darn it. But good.
He's attended all the meetings, so he'll hit the ground running.
Right. Yeah, and I'm aware he's been at all the meetings and he's willing to be a part of that. Did you want to come up and say anything? Are you good?
Keep me out of shy, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, yeah. Alright, any questions from council on this one?
No.
Okay, what would we like to do? Mr. Geek?
Motion to approve, Mr. Rick.
Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thanks a lot for jumping in on that. I know you've been kind of involved anyway and have been showing up to meetings, so that'll help a lot in moving forward with that initiative. I can also, just real quick, I'll mention, they've been going pretty strong for a while now, and they've already been going out to meetings. They just did the chamber breakfasts last week. Been to Lions Club, into the school board, a lot of different areas within town to start getting the message out about bringing this facility to fruition and getting to that point. So thank you, Ms. Estes, for all your work on that and being a part of that to get us where we are today.
I'm gonna continue, because I'm gonna continue helping with their website.
Right, and I think that'll be great, and I think any help we can get is where we're at right now, to get this thing be successful for our community. So, a lot of people have been asking for it, and so let's see how we can make it work. Okay, I'll just move right into item five, city council agenda requests and announcements. I'll start with... Are you doing your thing again tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can I come to you last?
Yes.
Okay, I'll start with Mr. Geek.
Nothing tonight. I'll save my time for Mr. ...
Nothing.
Right on, bro. That's right on time.
Mr. Koch? Mr. Lauer?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. I got picked a flyer up, and I do have it electronically available if you want to put it on the website. It's a new program running through the area on aging on seniors and shared housing. So if you're having a little bit more month at the end of the money, as a senior put it to me, this could be a possibility. Somebody maybe move in with you and do some shared housing, help you with some housework, meals, things around the house. And it's a program run by Sunshine Home Share, running out of the area on agency, so I think it could potentially help some of our people. I have one thing I'd like to run by the council. I always look at the bus ridership numbers on the report we get every month, and I always think to myself, how can we possibly, you know, try to increase the ridership, and we've been doing the free rides for the kids in the summer? I had a couple other ideas that I have run through Todd, and they think they could work out. The Senior Center, and I ran this one through them, was if they could add on to their membership as a perk, that if someone is a member of the Senior Center, and you have to be 55 to be a member of the Senior Center, they could offer as a perk on their back of their card, if they show their Senior Center card, they could ride the city bus for free. And help get our seniors around town to shopping. There is a bus stop at the Senior Center, so if they wanted to go there for lunch or something, the Senior Center didn't think there would be that many people that it would really affect the fare box, but it could be a perk, and maybe in the long run save them money that people might not need door-to-door service, which is more expensive, but they would be able to be near a bus stop. So I'd like to kind of run that through the council, and if that's something they would consider rolling out. The other one, Todd ran by the chamber, and they're really excited about it. We came up with free Saturdays in December, starting on Black Friday, so run it that weekend, that Friday and Saturday, and then free bus service only Saturdays during December. And that way, if people wanted to take advantage of some of those great shopping sales in town, the two Walmarts, Sam's Club, Walgreens, you know, anything around, but trying to keep our, help our small businesses in town and keep our tax dollars local. So with council's approval to head in that direction, those are both ready to kick off as, to help the people in our community.
I'm fine with it. I don't see any problem. I think anytime we can help, especially those who need the bus, I mean, I don't see a problem in it. I like the idea of December, and then the Black Friday thing especially. What's the hours on that during that time?
Oh, on Saturdays, we're eight to five, I think, is where our Saturday hours are.
Eight to five, and then what's like Friday?
Fridays, we run from five until eight.
Five until eight.
Because it's a regular weekday.
Right. Just know that people who do ride the bus on Saturday, there is no dispatch, and we only run it once an hour. So you wouldn't be able to call up to the dispatch center and ask about anything about it. You'd have to pretty much, you know, do that ahead of time or just get the schedule online. But, okay, so it looks like we're gonna move forward with that. Alright, and the chamber's gonna help with the flyers and getting that out to their members and things, so, thank you.
Okay, no, I think it's a good idea. I'm gonna go ahead and jump in here, because again, with, I don't know what Phil's gonna say here, how long he's gonna take. Not more than two minutes, but I'm just joking. I've been, a couple people have kind of thrown the idea out at me, and I just want to throw, it's a suggestion, and it's not something that I want to spend a lot of time on. If you feel strongly one way or the other, then I want to hear it. And really for council, and it's our selection of Mayor Pro Tem, and how that's done. It's been floated to me a couple times now about possibly doing like a secret ballot. If you want to be a Mayor Pro Tem, get your name to Sylvia. She puts them on the ballot, and then they just get passed out, and we pick that way. Advantages to that, it's, it gives everyone an opportunity to get their name on the ballot. Who wants to be on there? If you don't want to be on there, then you don't have to be on there. I think that would be the same as if we were doing it out in the open. It takes the mayor's control out of it, and whose light gets picked first, if that makes sense? That's always been kind of a struggle with me, and as the mayor and then not as the mayor, and I've, you know, I just... The struggle is whose light gets on first, and if I'm not watching, then whose light do I pick first? Because there's not a, an order in which I think that's done fairly. And it would also take pressure off of people as well. If they're, they don't know which way they want to go, I think it, really, they get that last moment there to be able to vote. And this, again, it's just a suggestion. I'm not advocating one way or the other. I don't know if Ms. Estes or, I think, Dieter, yep, Ms. Dieter walked in. If you would have a comment on that. I was hoping to bring it up at the next meeting when you were sitting. At the same time, we have to put someone into that position that night, that you guys are sworn in, so... I want to open it up. If you guys have any ifs, ands, or buts about, or you just, no way, we can do it the old way, I'm okay with that. I have, I don't know which way either. I think that's a very difficult decision to make, because I think feelings get hurt. I think unintentionally, but feelings do get hurt, and that's not what we've been about up here. And so, it's just, again, a suggestion I'm throwing out, if anybody has any strong opinions one way or the other on that, I would love to hear it.
Sounds fair.
Mayor Pro Tem?
I think, in retrospect, looking back over the eight years that I've sat here, I think I've witnessed maybe three of those. In which, the first year I sat, it was kind of heated. A lot of emotional feelings were displayed on the public side. I think that in hindsight, you know, at the end of the day, we all have the same objective, and that's to be as beneficial to the city as we possibly can. I think that over the course of the years, we have put a lot of those feeling, personal feelings and animosity behind us. We've matured a lot as a city, and as a council, being honest. In my opinion, I think that closed ballot would be sufficient.
Mr. Koch?
You know, I agree with you very much. I think that having the first light turned on is a good thing, but I think that having the opportunity to vote for whoever you want is very obvious, and I think very handy for all of us, and especially those on council.
Anybody else?
It doesn't matter to me one way or another. I can vote either way, and I'll be more than happy to voice my opinion either way, so...
And I respect that, and you know, some of us are very comfortable with that, others aren't.
I don't want to be Mayor Pro Tem, so that's out.
So don't nominate Sam.
Don't nominate me. I'm going with saying no.
Go ahead, Mr. Applegate.
I'm with Phil here. I think what you were talking about with the ballot seems, it seemed like a fair way to do it.
I'm trying to be fair. I don't know if it ultimately, I don't know, I struggle with it every time it comes up. For the last 16 years I've been here, 14 years. You're okay with it? Greg?
Yeah, I think it's good. Yeah, that's great, I think.
Fine, but I think the results need to be made public. I don't want somebody to come back and say, you know, it was a secret ballot, and you just announce the name. I think the, just like if it was on the board, I think the results need to be made public.
They'll be read out loud.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just, I just don't want people to think it's a secret ballot, or there's anything secret going on.
No, I think, I think what we can do will say, okay, these are the ones in the running, and then, you know, if, maybe there's only one person that wants it as well, and that's okay too, and that makes that decision, I think, 10 times easier.
And I understand that, but I'm just saying, if there are more than one that want to run, I think it needs to be, whatever the vote is, needs to be announced publicly, so it becomes part of the public record.
Yeah, I don't want to, yeah, no, you're exactly right.
And I've just, I've been in meetings where things like that have happened, and then, you know, and then Sylvia obviously has to save them as part of the official record.
Yeah, definitely. As we would any other time, I think. I would, I really want to take the control of the person sitting here out of it, and the favoritism that comes up with that, and, and, you know, just, I don't know, just an idea, trying to be fair about it, so... So if you guys are okay with that, then at this point, to include our new members, if you want to be Mayor Pro Tem, get Sylvia the name by when? Your name by when?
Just ASAP. Just email me, and I'll start putting the ballot together.
Okay.
I'll have it in front of you on the 10th.
And then we'll do that after swearing in and everything else. Okay. Okay. The only other announcement I have is remember, remember the tree lighting is this Friday at 6 o'clock at Mayor's Park, and I'm understanding that it's gonna be a little bit brighter out this time, so I'm looking forward to that and what new stuff we're gonna be looking towards. So, we'll see how it goes. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week I started saying thanks to certain people, and I'd like to continue that today. And the reason why is because the next council meeting that takes place is the 7th of 10th. In my opinion, it should give us time to focus on the new best coming in, and I don't want to check one, two, three. And I don't want to take the glory from those that have just been elected, but at the same time, I do feel as though that I do owe a lot of gratitude and thanks. But at the same time, I do feel as though that I do owe a lot of gratitude and thanks to uh, a lot of people. So with that said, I would like to start by thanking, and as you notice, some of these people aren't here phys- physically anymore. Or, and there are others that will not be present in the room tonight, but I, I still find it very important for me to thank them. So I'd like to start by thanking Father Bill Comedy, Reverend McMern, Father John, Reverend Daniels. These guys have truly been very inspirational to me spiritually over the last eight years that I've had the opportunity to sit here. I'd also like to thank Judy Christian. Uh, many of you may not know, but Judy and I were, were, were pretty close and uh. She was a, a very important person in my life while I was taking the first steps sitting on council. I'd also like to thank Harold Thompson and his family. Uh, Harold uh, his, his feisty self got me involved with U R A and. And uh, when I was campaigning my first uh, race, he drove me every bit of the way. He didn't get out and walk, but he doggone sure chauffeered me. Uh, I'd also like to thank Darrell Couch and his wife. Uh, for the many conversations that we've had passing, especially in Walmart and stuff like that. Uh, uh, and, and I mean that because uh, regardless of where I was or what I was doing, uh, the two of you would stop. And, and we would talk, you know, and uh, that, that means a lot. Uh, I'd also like to thank Al Lenders. Al, I did thank you last week, but, but you weren't here. And I think a lot of people were taken aback because I did thank you, but you know, you have been inspirational to me. Uh, at the beginning, it wasn't always like that. Uh, as, as I think I matured, I think honestly, as we both matured. We, we learned to respect each other, to listen to one another. And which you blessed me with a lot of ideas as I moved down the road and I thank you for that. I'd, I'd like to thank the city clerk's office, Joanie, Sandy, Rosa. Uh, and it's been a pleasure to see Joanie blossom over the years. I mean, she has turned out to be a remarkable, remarkable person and uh. My advice to you guys coming in new is that the city clerk's office, in my opinion, is the heart and soul of City Hall. And the reason I say that is because they have to have an aspect of knowledge of every department that is governed inside the city. They are the, our first line with the public and in my opinion, they don't get a lot of uh, credit that they should get. Now, the next two ladies, I'm gonna divide them by floors. On the first floor, uh, the second floor being up here. There are only two people I afraid, I was afraid of in this building. And, and Connie being one of them and Sylvia being the other. And, and, and uh, Connie's not here, so I'm not gonna go too long with her, but I will say that uh, in twenty twenty. I want everybody to be on the lookout. Connie and I should be doing a play together. Uh, I will probably be writing the script. We're supposed to be a married couple and one of us is supposed to die. Uh, so. But uh. Sylvia, you know, I really value you. You're very compassionate. I value your friendship, your honesty. And uh, you've kept me out of trouble so many times that, you know, in here and out of here. And I, and I thank you for that and I see you as a, a little sister that I don't have. And so I'm gonna say God bless you and your family. Much love to, to you, Mark and the boys. Uh, you've been phenomenal and thank you. Uh, on the street side, I'd like to thank the, the entire street department, but I'd like to give a special shout out to, to Bob McDonald. Uh, for the fantastic job he's done with working with so little. Uh, he's done amazing job uh, uh, with the foundation of the direction we need to go. Uh, as a city with our road improvements. And I'm just really sorry that uh, two A did not pass, but for what he's working with, he's done a remarkable job. And we can see the evidence of that as we drive the main corridors in the city. I'd also like to thank Carl Christian for always going above and beyond for the support he gives his employees. His employees think the world of him. And also for being a true friend and letting the Thomas family be a part of his family, just as they are a part of ours. I would like to thank him for his mentorship, his guidance in educating me in all utility matters. I'd also like to thank Lucia. For the hard work, the hours that she dedicates to the city. I don't think people realize that Lucia typically comes in at two thirty, three o'clock in the morning. And uh, Lucia has, has, has uh, been instrumental to me as well. She's somebody that could close the door. And uh, we go back and forth and she would let me know how it was and I'm appreciative of that. Because, you know, one thing I've always learned is that no matter who the leader is, the leader is only as good as those that are subordinate to him or her. Because they're the ones who give directions, they're the ones who have the knowledge. And they're the ones who set precedent and putting policy together so that we can implement it. Then I had the opportunity to, to sit back and think about personal achievements. And I, you know, I, I, I focused on this, I thought about this. And I come to, came to realize that a majority of my personal achievements, I think, in the city. Uh, focus mainly around public safety. And so with that, I'd like to start with Chris. Chris, on a state level, you, Sam Geek, Bill Elders, Pete Carey, and a small list of others. We came together and we marched up to the Capitol one day to, to have a discussion with uh, Senator Gardner. About uh, putting new policies and procedures in place uh, for. Not just police officers, but for pa- public safety officials uh, to pass. What, what's the House bill, is that, do you remember? But uh, it, it, it was a pleasure taking that opportunity to do that with you. That, that is the greatest thing that I've done on a state level ever. And, and uh, it, it, it was a good time driving up and, and we accomplished that goal that we set out to do. Uh, so I wanna thank you for that because that's, you know, that's something that's everlasting, that will take precedent in this state uh, for public safety forever, I hope. Um. And I'm thankful for the years of military service and support you have given and that you continue to give, Chris. And I find that very important for the simple reason that Fountain Valley. Uh, its demographic makeup is not only of residents that are from Fountain or people that have moved here. But when you look at the military aspect, the D O D aspect, the retirees, the active duty. I think that is very, very important, especially for our chief of police, because he understands the, the frustration. The fears that active duty retired dependents. Families go through. And so I think that's, that's very, very instrumental. And I also like to thank Bob McDonald. I don't know if any of you know, but he uh. Uh, used to be a Apache helicopter pilot. And so Bob and also John Trelch. Because there are not too many people that understand the mind concept that a lot of us have. When you're dealing with PTSD and the list can go on and on and on. So I would like to thank you uh, for what you're bringing to the city of Fountain. And I have to, and since Scott's not here, I'm gonna give him a quick shout out. I'd like to thank Scott Trainer for. The arguments. The love, the friendship. Uh, and a joke between Scott and I, at one time, I, I think that both of us thought that we could essentially almost have been related. Uh, through a relationship my son and his daughter had, but that's another story for another time. But it, but it's been a pleasure uh, seeing his children and my children grow up to be the success that they are today. And that, last but not least, I'd like to uh, thank my brother Todd Evans. We've done so much together. I mean, man, I, I, I didn't even know where to pick, you know? Uh, you know, for starters, uh. Todd and I, I'd never forget, when I first came on council, we went to the royalty area together. And we looked at uh, two buildings that were deteriorated, vacant. And, and not only were their eyes sore, but they were a public safety nightmare for a trap. Uh, that could bring in homeless, a child could be murdered, raped, just, your mind can't even imagine what could have potentially happened in that, those two buildings. And Todd, along, myself, along with code enforcement, we worked collectively together to accomplish things that. A lot of people in the city thought could never happen. And we were able to eradicate and knock down not one, not two, but three eyesores in the city of Fountain. One being the Mars Building and the uh, other two in the royalty area, you, you know what they were called?
The Porshue Building and then the Crest Department.
And, and we demolished those buildings and I keep. I've kept this brick back here. All the years I've sat here. And the reason I've kept these, this brick back here, because it served as a reminder. Of what we are and can do if we work collectively together. The cleanups that Todd and I have done together in other impoverished areas in the city. Working shoulder to shoulder had, has just been remarkable. And another great feat that Todd so graciously, graciously let me partner with him on was uh. The ten million dollar Link Road project. That costs City of Fountain residents not one zero dime. Not one dime, ten million dollars. And the love I have for you and your family, I mean, it's, it's immense. Uh, um, I'd do anything in the world for you. And uh, I'm not ashamed of the closeness that I have for this man here. Sharon, I'd like to thank you for the partnerships we did in transportation. That was a big milestone, I think. Uh, and, and I'm just really appreciative that I had the opportunity to work with you on that. Um. Greg, when it came to technology, I T, man, I'm gonna tell you what, I'm not gonna sit up here and lie. I followed your advice. And, and I, and luckily I can say you've never steered me wrong and I don't think anybody else up here. Richard, I think that uh, you sitting in regional buil- building, I think that's phenomenal. I think you represent the city well. And I'm glad that you were re-elected and proud of you. And Sam? You took the place of Sam Heckman when he left me. But uh, you know, I have much love and respect for, for you and Marcia. Uh, I see you as a great uncle and I love you so much and I'm, and I'm appreciative of you and I sitting on that, that health department thing together. And um, Patty, Gabe, and Jim. I think that, you know, all of us have grown so much together. And I have the utmost respect for each and every one of you. Patty, I think you kinda got over me a little bit here because I thought uh, you and I were supposed to walk into the sunset together, but you gotta jump. And then not only that, I thought we were supposed to sit, sit on the balconies evenings, having drinks together, writing editorials about people. But uh. But uh, you know, I guess that didn't work out, but we started this venture together. So I know both of you can appreciate the feelings that I feel right now. It's both bitter and sweet. Jim, I want you to know that I cherished all the breakfasts and lunches we've shared together. Thank you for the knowledge you shared, the laughter. Thank you to Kathy for opening up your home to me. Uh, I've always seen you as a walking, living institution and the stories you can tell. My friend, I tell you what, between you and Sam Geek, we've had some good doggone laughs. And uh. Patty? You know. I truly wanna thank you for, for being that big sister I never had. I wanna thank you for giving me the courage to write editorials to express my anger. When, when I thought the city was being wronged. I wanna thank you for being a sounding board when I wanted to give up. But most of all, I wanna thank you for allowing us to put our differences aside for the common good of all people in the city of Fountain. And, and I don't expect everybody to understand that, but, but I love you immensely for that. And, and thank you. And Gabe? I wanna go on record and say I think you're doing a hell of a job running the city. And uh, I wanna thank you for trusting me, giving me the opportunity. To go out and do things that were important for me, contacting the governor, the water issue, things of that nature. And I know Curtis was probably scared every second of the day that I, that I was going out there to do this. And thank you Curtis for, for, for believing in me. But, but, but Gabe, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, you're a hell of a man and I have nothing but the utmost respect for you. It was a pleasure sitting up here with you. And, and I really mean thank you for trusting me to be your voice, the city's voice. And what a lot of people don't know, Gabe and I did good cop, bad cop. Gabe would let me go out and raise all the hell. And he would put, have the smiling face for the face of the city. And the reason for that is because that gave us a way to hold those. Responsible for certain things accountable. And it worked out well for us. So with that said, that's all I have to say and I just, once again, thank you everybody.
Okay, um. What's that? No, I don't need a break, um. Uh, I, you know. I've enjoyed working with the both of you. Jim, you and I started a long time ago, uh, together and I learned a lot from you and. In planning and, and uh, just in, in the city in general and um, you and your wife have always been so gracious to everybody. Um, and just a big supporter of the, of the community, the fire department, the police department, everybody. Um, so I appreciate all the friendship we have now and, and just the camaraderie you have with everybody. Um, and, in total, not just here and, and confines of City Hall, but everywhere and, and people really look up to you and. And all the things that you've done and, and your heart for the city, you know, really, and, and the community as a whole, so. Uh, I appreciate that. And, and, and Phil? Um, you know, there was a time when we were seen on two opposite ends of the, of the field here and. And I think we proved that uh, we can have a difference of opinion and, and still work together and, and make things better. Um, I, I remember when uh, um, I was just coming to council meetings and sitting out there and watching and. Um, and just seeing what's happening in my town and, and uh, I was having a conversation with then Mayor Borella. And I said, uh, how do you do it when you have people that just get up? Cause I remember I'd come to a few meetings and people were just hammering him for one thing after another and. Um, even his own council members were, were going after him and I said, how do you do it? How do you keep a straight face? How do you um, uh, do that? You're not getting paid. Uh, it's all volunteer, you know, you have a million other things you could be doing right now. How do you do it? And uh, the thing that always, I always come back to and I tell those to people I speak to and, and in groups I go to is. Is uh, it doesn't matter what side you're, of the fence you're sitting on. Everyone has what they believe is the best interest at heart for the city. Um, and at the end of the day, if we can keep that at, at the top of the um, the pile of all the stuff that's going on, I think uh. We, we've shown that we can move things forward and, and, and keep going and, and there are gonna be some big arguments and there's gonna be a lot of. Um, discontent around things, but uh, at the end of the day, again, uh, as you have proven and, and I have proven that uh, we, we can get above that and. And it's okay to disagree and, and move forward with that and. Um, it's how you disagree, I think, is what, what's the most adult thing about that and. I've seen in, in, not just here, but in, in life that uh, people disagree and they, they wanna get personal. I mean, I think here we've really, we've really gotten away from that. Um, and when we disagree, we disagree because we have different philosophies and that's okay, so. Uh, I do appreciate everything you've done for the city as well and, and um, you know, moving, moving us forward. Um, again, um, it's a tough job to get up here and put yourself out there and, and uh. And try to do what you think is best for the community. Uh, and in our, our community, which is growing ever so quickly, um, with things going on, it's, it's hard, it's a hard gig. And then to have people um, beat you down all the time, it's uh, it's even harder and, and uh. I had someone even say, well, you don't even need to do it. I mean, you've got, you know, kids, you've got a family and Phil, we know how many, you got like twenty kids over there or something, so. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot going on, so, you know, um. And they're all coming into their own lives and doing their own things and you wanna be a part of that, so. Uh, just a reminder for everybody that uh, um. Most of the time in local city government, you get people out that, that are really doing it for the, the betterment of their community and so. Uh, please keep that in mind. But again, thank you gentlemen for all the work you've done. Um, I think we are planning a small reception prior to our next meeting. Um, and uh, so if you'd like to come out and then at least pay uh, personal respects to our um, our outgoing members, that would be a, an opportunity. I think we're gonna do that five thirty at our next meeting, which would be December tenth. Um, is our next council meeting and that's when we will be doing swearing ins, I think, as well, so. Um, five thirty that night, make sure you get Ms. Coke out here to get you out here a little early and. And uh, we'll do some refreshments and things, just again, an opportunity for everyone to, to um. And, and we'll do some refreshments and things, just again, an opportunity for everyone to, to say their goodbyes if you'd like to that way. So with that, we will go ahead and keep moving. Right into public to be heard, citizens may address the council on items that are not on our agenda. We ask that you sign up with the city clerk prior to the meeting. Council may not be able to provide immediate answer, but we'll direct staff to follow up. And out of respect for the council and others in attendance, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. We're gonna have the lights on. I have one, two, three, four, five, five cards tonight. So I wanna make sure everyone has their, their time to be able to get up and speak. So I'll start in the order which I had them placed on here. I have Ms. Vicky LaPlante. Is she's gone? Is she here?
Ms. LaPlante left me with her notes and I could share that with council at a later time if you'd like.
Oh, okay.
She decided not to present.
Okay. Ms. St. Louis.
I wanted to say something.
Oh, no, go ahead. I should have asked you in the first place. I'm sorry. This will tie in.
I wanted to thank Phil and, you know, several of the council people because they, they did take a load off of me at a time when I really needed it. I had, I had my foot amputated, as everybody knows, and it wasn't an easy thing to do. But it was done and I, I, I think I benefited by it. I, I thank everybody on council for taking the load off me at that time. And I know that you did and not to my knowledge, but to your knowledge. And I, you know, I, I was talking with a friend today in Orange, California. And he and I used to be like brothers, but I feel like I've got a lot of brothers up here. And I really feel that.
An sister.
Yeah, ancestor. And I, I, I'm not gonna make this as long as Phil did. Thank you immensely and thank you one and all.
Okay, thanks.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, Ms. St. Louis, yes.
Patricia St. Louis, that's a perfect segue, Jim, cause I just wanted to speak very briefly to you and Phil. We were running mates at a time when Fountain really was in a lot of turmoil. And, you know, there was a time we were like at opposite ends of the spectrum and I, oh, Jim Coke, oh no. And you probably said, oh, that Patty St. Louis. But, you know, we came in together, we committed to working together and I couldn't be prouder of you two. And you two, Gabe, because you were there, I think, were you mayor pro tem then, I think, when we? Or you became mayor pro tem when we were elected, the three of us, I believe, you know? And I've seen this council come a long way, but Jim, you are a true warrior at heart. I'm so proud of you. I'm proud of you both for not only giving it four more years, which I sure wasn't gonna do. I'd had enough, you know? It was difficult enough watching what I did with the newspaper and not writing editorials, you know, that while I was serving as a council member. But it was such a good experience and you two are like brothers to me as well. And I'm just so very proud of you. Everything you did to stand up for people who are in lower economic areas, you know, both of you. You stood up for business people. I could go on and on, but I think you guys took most of the words out of my mouth about everything you said about just serving. And I was just so proud to be elected with you two and proud to be here tonight. If I'm not here next month, it's because I don't know what day of the week it is. Seriously, though. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Love you.
Love you.
All right. Mr. McMaster.
Mr. Mayor, city council members and fellow residents of Fountain. As the vice chair of the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority Board, I would like to express a few kind words of appreciation about council member Phil Thomas and his efforts on behalf of the City of Fountain to revitalize and improve our city. For almost a decade, Phil Thomas has been leading the charge to promote the revitalization of our fair city. During that time, he's been instrumental in guiding several official blight removal and remediation efforts affecting Fountain through various urban renewal activities. Some of those activities include helping to spearhead the Blight Gateway Initiative in 2012. And just a year later, becoming involved in the Pikes Peak Regional Building Mini Blight Program. Specifically, he was one of the driving forces and integral parts of the Mars Building Project at the time. And four years later, that same drive and leadership was brought to bear on the US-85 pad site project in that same program. Further, several years after Phil had retired from serving his country here at Fort Carson, he used his military background and insights to shed light on some of the challenges facing our military families as part of the 2015 Juulus Joint Land Use Study Group. The purpose of Juulus is to dovetail the growth and development of the five military installations here in the area with our own city's expansive efforts to continue to build on its traditions of small-town excellence and amenities. Meshing these two interests was and is instrumental to both entities. And Phil's efforts went a long way to advance that common cause. Phil has also been involved from the days of infancy of the Fountain Urban Renewal Authority itself as an official entity and continues to support our efforts to continue many of the activities he envisioned for the City of Fountain all those years ago. Phil's tireless efforts to promote our community, improve it, and bring it the notoriety it deserves are both refreshing and commendable. That kind of long-term vision, commitment, and dedication to make Fountain a better place to live for everyone truly benefits all of us. And so it is with a great deal of thankfulness that as the vice chair of the current FURA Board, I offer these words of gratitude about Councilman Phil Thomas and his efforts on behalf of the City of Fountain's revitalization efforts.
I started not to come tonight. Thank you, I, thank you. I appreciate that. And FURA is, is, is a phenomenal organization. And because of FURA, a lot of the things that we see the progress in the city is solely because of your hard work in, in the efforts of the group. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next card is Mr. Lender. Nope, there he is.
Al Lender, REA Road. Wow, after all that, and here I am to say what I'm gonna say, but simply amazing, Phil. You know, when you, we first got together, I was always against you. And remember I put those signs up all over your street and did a number on you. And what happened? We, we became really good pals. Okay. I finally, I got some pictures here. There's some things I wanna say. I don't wanna take anything away from what was said tonight because we truly do have a awesome city staff. And we truly, this year and the past years, had an awesome city council. And I just hope it continues. Anyways, I'm here to ask some questions about trash in our community. I'm getting a little tired of it. I was recently told by the waste fill up here that Ohio isn't the route any longer. Well, my question to you, because over the years, well, actually this past year, and, and you mentioned a lot of things about the waste management. I would be able to call up there and they'd come down and they'd pick all the trash up along the streets that have been dropped off. But I'm being told now they won't do that any longer because you took the route list off and Ohio isn't there. There is so much trash, Mayor, up on our street on Kane Road. Right now, there's two big bags of trash sitting on Kane Road, right across the street from your house, where the city has those two pipes coming on the ground, right in front of Sharon's, whatever her name is, my neighbor across the street. There's been some orange fence material that's been sitting there now for three days. And what my biggest concern was, for three days, I've been coming down here to loaf and jug at the light. And right there on the road was a pa, several patches of trash that I watched. And over the daytime, I came back and everything was just squished to the road. And right now, if you go there, it's still there now. It needs to be scraped off the road. My question to you is, I don't understand how many times a, a city vehicle goes by that. And why can't anybody, maybe it's not their job. Whose job is it to pick up trash in this, in this community? Is it us, the citizens, that have to go do this or what? So that's my question. Then I just, I'm having a terrible time with the maintenance up there, county maintenance, okay? As far as I'm concerned, they aren't very good neighbors. I put in several complaints about the weeds up there on their property. And till this day, I, I haven't heard or gotten a question back what's taking place from Juan Flores. I have something I wanna show you because this has been an ongoing thing. And I know you came and Todd Evans came and everyone came to my house after that storm that we had with the hail. And you saw the destruction of my property and the destruction of the water coming out of that maintenance facility. So I wanna show you, that right there is my whole driveway got washed out. That's all in my fields. Can you imagine scraping all that out of there because of county maintenance? Can you put the video on of all the water? And I know you're all familiar with that corner up on REA Road. When it floods out, it floods out, the whole road floods. What does it do? It overtakes that road and comes down my hill and it goes through my barn. Can you show that? All right, so anyways, it's too bad because you would have gasped at what I would have shown you. How my barn takes all that crap. And what really bothers me, thank God Scott Trainer wrote a letter for me and those people ignored it. So I just wanted to show you this stuff and I just wanna tell you that I want you or somebody in this city to say something to those people in that maintenance building. They are no good neighbors. They don't wanna help, they don't wanna do much. And I just want you to remember that every time these people come to this meeting, cause if I know they're gonna be here, I'll be here. But I'm not here a lot anymore. So that's all I wanted to say. Please pick up the trash or have somebody pick it up. I've picked it up for years and years and years. And thank God, you know, when we met the people up on the garbage heap up there, Jensen, Barrett Jensen's his name, I became fairly friendly with him. We went out to lunch a couple times. Because of what Todd Evans did with them, with giving us that new road, that Link Road. This fellow, one day we were at lunch and I was complaining to him how the people here, it's too expensive to go there and, and drop trash off. And what did he do? What did he do? He lowered it fifty percent for all of Fountain residents and veterans. And that was an remarkable thing and the man's remarkable and I really like him and.
Think he did.
I've talked with him so many times, he's not like a Dennis Heisi. I went to Dennis Heisi and everything was done. This guy, who knows? But I'm going to the county commissioners meeting here shortly. I know I'm gonna get in trouble, but that's the way it is. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Al. Okay, yeah, I know we've kinda been going around, around with him too, so. Okay. All right, Ms. Meininger.
Last question, Al. Al? Can, can we make sure he has the app on his phone? So if he, can we make sure, do you have a smartphone? And do you have the app on your phone for how to take a picture or something to report it from the spot? If I can figure it out, anybody can figure it out, so we'll get, get somebody to work with you on that. Cause, cause it took me a while to get it. I, I turned in my own house one time accidentally thinking I was turning in something else, so, you know, we all make mistakes, so. Okay.
All I wanna tell you folks, these people are fantastic.
I know, I know, yeah, cause, cause I saw a street sign knocked down, you know?
Thanks, Al. All right, thank you. I appreciate it. All right, Ms. Meininger.
Deborah Stout-Meininger, community advocate, citizen scientist. First piece of good news is that I try to keep copy of the, the, the bus schedule with me. I keep extra copies in case people don't have it when they're trying to get on and off the buses. And on Saturday, the first ones, it starts at the subway by Walmart at nine twenty-five, does the first pickup. The last drop-off is at the Fountain Valley Senior Center at four fifty-five in the evening. So if we share it, we need to share the right times because it's not eight to six. It's a lot of cold weather to be standing out there for waiting for a bus. So anyway, I can leave this with somebody if you want it, so that you can print out the right stuff if you put it on the website. Do you have this on our website? Yes, but we were talking about Saturday only that, at that moment, I believe. Close only counts if you're not the one standing on the corner, waiting for the bus. Thank you. And I am always sorry when I see some of the ones that I finally got to the point where I can work with you guys, leave and go someplace else. But that's the way life is and I look forward to working with the new members. That's, that's part of the way life is, so I never get angry with anybody about leaving or coming or going. But then I gotta make more, more copies out for everybody of the information that I think that you need, I need to share with you for the benefit of the community. The only one who's guaranteed me that he actually reads all this stuff of all the elected officials I deal with is Phil. That's why I gave him a big fat yellow envelope that I usually reserve for the police and the fire department. Because what I do, I do out of my own pocket. And I think it's that my time and the printing, because I think the community and the elected officials are important. Number one, that we work together even when we disagree. And number two, that I put that information together for a reason. I don't just copy something and then bring it in. I do the research on it, whether it's middle levies or special district, PIFs and TIFs and everything else that do cost people sometimes thousands of dollars every year out of their pockets that they aren't aware of. My focus is the community of the people, by the people, and for the people. And sometimes that for the people gets kinda lost in the shuffle of developers and CEOs from big companies that want the money and think that people can be acceptable collateral damage. Whether it's about the, the ongoing construction we have up by the Walmart, the new Walmart and what it's costing the city. I'm sorry, municipal bonds, say municipal for a reason, because the public does end up paying either with middle levies or with taxes, sales taxes. When we are paying out of our sales taxes for that, that means that's less money, not more, from a project. So that's important and people don't always understand what's going on and why they can't afford to live in their houses when the, when things get bad. And the toll roads I'll be bringing up more of. But in the meantime, I do wish to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And I'd be happy to come the next meeting when you do the swearing in and I'll be happy to do the swearing at as time goes by.
We can swear at you?
No, I get to swear at you.
Oh, okay.
But I use at least six letters long, so they don't come into the four-letter word category. That's my embellishment upon the vocabulary. Anyway, happy Thanksgiving to everybody and thank you for all that you do. And I'll give you heck for anything you didn't do. Have a good day.
Okay. That's it for my cards. Okay, um, that's it for my cards. Um, we will move on to our consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. No separate item or no, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests. In which case, item may be removed from the count consent agenda and considered separately, again, at the discretion of the council. So we have items A, B, and C on consent. Uh, Mr. Geek?
I made a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And Mr. Applegate?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Alright, item eight, old business. A, second reading of ordinance number one seven four one, setting appropriations for the funds, offices, and departments of the City of Fountain, Colorado for the fiscal year 2020, beginning January one, 2020.
Good evening, City Council. John Lewis, Finance Director for City of Fountain. Tonight, we have the second reading of ordinance seventeen forty-one, setting appropriations for all of the departments of the City of Fountain for the fiscal year 2020. Now, as you know, we had the first reading last week. And, uh, you approved the first reading, uh, of the budget. Uh, there was a really good question when we spoke about reserves from Mr. Gordon Rick regarding gee, why don't we look at it for a ten-year period? What, what do the reserves look like? So, Mr. Rick, we did put that together and, um, so I wanted to show this graph for everyone. These are the reserve levels for the unassigned and emergency reserves. As you know, the policy that you have set is to have approximately twenty percent of the total annual expenditures be set aside as reserves that are unassigned. Uh, and including the three percent emergency table reserve that is required by the state. So for the last ten years, these have been the levels of the reserves. They've gone from approximately two million one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, uh, up, uh, to a high of six million and sixty thousand. And by the end of 2020, we are projecting there'll be approximately four million two hundred and seventy thousand. As you can see, the percentages, uh, have ranged anywhere from six point three percent to a high of twenty-four point four percent. The, the low years, of course, were right after the Great Recession in 2012 and 2013. So by the end of 2020, we think they'll hover right around seventeen point five percent. And, uh, as we discussed last week, uh, we'll, we'll certainly look towards keeping it, uh, as close to the twenty percent or, or slightly above, uh, as possible. And, and certainly, as, uh, Councilwoman Thompson pointed out, uh, we, when, when we get below the twenty percent, it's only because we are investing in one-time capital expenditures that are really important. So I wanted to see if there were any questions about this slide, uh, from council members or Mr. Rick?
Good, thank you, John.
You bet.
I, I think, again, I just want to point out that legally and by state statute, we're required to have three percent reserve.
Yes, that's right.
Um, it's always just been, I don't know, is it, is it a policy? Is it that we're at twenty? Is it just kind of a, a agreement?
It was a decision by council that was made to, it was a decision by council years ago to main, try and maintain that twenty percent.
Yeah, and so, I mean, there, obviously there have been years where we couldn't maintain that for whatever reason. But, um, um, it's not an, uh, I guess my point is it's not an edict that we have to be at twenty, otherwise we're...
That's correct. We have to be at three.
Right. We have to be at three. That's, that's state statute. We have to do that. But, um, um, and, and I think we've done a pretty good job with the last few years. They get pretty close to that, so, um, uh, and, and the reason why we have reserves is, is, as you said, those sometime, one-time buys that we had to do. I remember one year, early on, I think right after I got on, we, uh, bought the ladder truck using reserves. And, and that, it was, it was able, we were able to do that because of reserves, so. And we, and then ladder truck came at the right time and, and, um, at the right price and we were able to do it, so, um, thank you for showing us the ten years.
You bet, you bet. And, uh, again, uh, we do a biannual budget. So, uh, we did one for 2019 and 2020. Uh, state statute and city charter require that an annual budget be adopted every year. And so, for this 2020, what we did is, is we met with City Council on July twenty-second and October third to review recommended revisions to the initial 2020 budget, uh, that was reviewed last year. And, um, we received guidance from you and, and went ahead and came up with a recommendation there for, for 2020. Notice for this, uh, hearing, um, was published in the October thirty Fountain Valley News. Um, and, uh, which is a newspaper of general circulation. And, uh, we did go through a brief presentation on November twelfth. Uh, so at this point, I would recommend approving ordinance number seventeen forty-one on second reading.
Okay, and just to reiterate, there were no changes proposed, uh, between first reading and now, so...
That's correct.
Um, unless there are comments or questions regarding this, um, we can take a motion. Since it is second reading. Mr. Lowry?
I move to approve ordinance seventeen forty-one on second reading.
And Mr. Coke?
Second.
Okay, well...
Seventeen forty-one.
I'm sorry?
Seventeen forty-one. How'd you say it?
Okay. Oh, okay. Uh, we have a motion and second for approval. Please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thanks a lot again to all the hard work and everybody who came out, um, and helped with the process. And, um, it's, it's, it's always a very tough thing to do, but we get through it and, and...
Thank you to all the department heads that...
Right, and the department heads.
Just with this.
Okay, alright, um, we'll keep moving forward. Item nine, new business. Nothing was taken off consent, so we'll go to nine B. I'm opening a public hearing and first reading of ordinance number one seven four two. An ordinance repealing and reordaining Title Seventeen zoning of the Fountain Municipal Code and all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith. And declaring the zoning map with a print date of November thirteen, two thousand nineteen, is the official zoning map. Ms. Martinez?
Thank you. Um, so this has been a long process for the last about year and a half, going through, um, the RFP process. Find identifying a consultant to work with the city to really update and modify our zoning ordinance, which has last been comprehensively updated in two thousand and two. Uh, we identified McCool Development Solutions early on as a leader in being able to, um, bring us into the twenty-first century in our zoning ordinance. Um, and also their ability to provide legal reviews and just their expertise in general in land use planning. Um, this amendment was broken into two phases. The first phase was a diagnostic of, um, our current ordinance to identify where we needed to update, what needed to change because of, um, federal changes. And what just needed to change in general because of the length of time that has taken place between the two zoning ordinance amendments. The second phase was the actual update of the code itself, um, where it was broken into various work sessions and public engagement, um, using, uh, social media and our own website to gather information. In addition to meeting with the Planning Commission, worker sessions, City Council through work sessions, the Home Builders Association, Chamber of Commerce, Old Town Steering Committee, um, Economic Development. I'm sure there are various others that I've met, um, to solicit the feedback from the community in order to make this the best code possible for our community. And with that, I'm going to pass that over now to, um, McCool Development Solutions to go through the ordinance.
Okay, welcome back.
Thank you for having me back. Um, my name is Jennifer Woods. For those of you, um, who, um, were here for the last time, I was, I presented during your work sessions. And we, we really went through, um, kind of the, we went into the weeds, we'll say that, in terms of our code review and the module discussion that we had. Um, I won't do too much of a, a repetition of what Kristi introduced. Um, what I do kind of want to do is just kind of go over what we're gonna talk about tonight. Um, we're, we're gonna do a high-level project overview really quick, um, kind of about this stage of the process, kind of the, the module development and the public hearing stage of the process. Um, how we created the public hearing draft, kind of what are the documents that are in your packet now? And, and how we formulated through all the public comments, comments, excuse me. Um, our updates to the webpage and how we utilize that through the, throughout the process. Um, we'll talk about the public hearing draft and kind of the different aspects of it, the same way we did the modules. But a much more abbreviated version, we're not gonna dig into them the way we did, um, with our discussion draft work sessions. Um, and then we'll go into staff recommendations. Without further ado, um, as Kristi mentioned, we started this, um, in 2018. And, uh, we did go through some, uh, what we call a zoning ordinance diagnosis, where we, we really kind of audit the ordinance to see what changes need to be made, kind of flesh those changes out with, um, with staff, with council, and just make sure we're on the right track. And then start down the path of, um, module development and the public hearing draft document. Which we opened the public hearing, I mean, excuse me, opened the module draft for public comment, um, in July and kind of opened that period from July to August. Um, but in all honesty, um, the public has had a, a chance and an opportunity to comment all throughout the process. Um, our webpage has, has provided them with the ability to comment, um, on all the different modules we developed and all the different drafts that we developed. So, we got a lot of comments, um, as a result of that. So the modules that we discussed, the six modules that we discussed, um, were zoning districts and use classifications, development and design standards, which those two modules really kind of go together. Um, non-conformities, and we talked about signs and, and, and you probably will never look at a sign the same way again as a result of that conversation. Um, we, we also looked at administration and procedures and then also the structure and the organization of the actual ordinance itself. In terms of where we're at in the whole entire process, we are literally one step away from the final step. So that feels kind of good in terms of where we're at in the process. So, how did we get to this public hearing draft? So, we incorporated a lot of the comments we received. And I should clarify in terms of the comments that we received, um, we received comments and we received a lot of questions. And I don't know if you remember, um, one of the last times I presented in front of you. I think I tried to define a planner as sort of a decoder ring for a zoning code. And so you'll find about fifteen pages worth of decoder ring-related questions, um, as it pertains to the zoning code. Because zoning codes are not easy reading and they're not necessarily, um, you know, something that, uh, John Q. Public or Jane Q. Public would read and say, "I get that. I understand that." So that Q and A is put in your packet and was put on our webpage to ensure that people received a response to the questions that they had as it related to the zoning code. Those comments that we received that were, that equated to a change, affected a change in the zoning code. Um, there's a document in there that talks about comment responses. Those are the actual changes we made to the modules themselves that became the public hearing draft. Just to understand the magnitude of changes, um, there were only about three pages and that's in a table. So, all in all, there's probably about a dozen comments that equated to some minor changes throughout the code. And they were good comments, so it was good to make those changes. Um, we also did some testing. And so at the begin, at the end of my presentation, you'll see a couple other definitions that were, that we think we need to tweak as a result. Um, and we'd like for you to consider including those as part of your recommendation. But I will get to those, but I wanted to mention them ahead of time. So our interactive webpage, right now it has that public hearing draft on it. In addition, it has the Q and A and the comment responses, all of which were in your packet. We left all of the previous information on that webpage too, so people could see how we got to where we are. And so all of the previous documents and the presentations and everything we've done to date are all available there too, as kind of historic record. So, to dive into the actual, uh, public hearing draft summary, we'll start with zoning districts and use classifications and the changes we made to this area of the, of the zoning ordinance. So, we did modify some district characteristics, some of the objectives to be more clear in terms of what those districts were really trying to incorporate in terms of uses and the, the characteristics of them. And tweaked some of the development standards and uses. Um, we calibrated some lot sizes in certain districts, some setbacks in other districts, and building height and coverage requirements, and really tried to calibrate those development standards. So things like setbacks and building heights to the way that things are built today. We also reconciled some redundant processes where perhaps there was a site plan approval required. In addition, the use was a conditional use, some redundant processes there that we just simplified and made sure they didn't have to go through two processes, just one. So additionally, uh, we modernized the land use lists in each of the zones. Um, I did receive a question about what this term really meant and to kind of unpack it a little bit. Um, a good example that I've, I've kind of used is we added taprooms, because that's a use that wasn't a brewery or a taproom, wasn't a use that wasn't as prevalent, maybe even twenty years ago, and removed things like a fountain soda shop. Because we don't see those anymore and those were not necessarily as prevalent as maybe a taproom. Just to give you an example of what that meant. We aligned, um, some of the current practices and, and made it consistent where necessary for efficient implementation that maintains the character and built form envisioned by the city. And one of the things that we also did was, um, include the Old Town Guidelines and made sure that they were represented as such as guidelines, as an optional, um, opportunity. And then also included in there that LID or Low-Impact Development, green infrastructure, those kinds of things are highly, highly recommended as part of that kind of development scheme. So development and design standards. We clarified some of the lot area regulations. That particular section was a little, um, mystifying, so to speak. Uh, we updated graphics where standards have been modified to make sure everything correlates properly. Um, and we made a few refinements to the text in regards to parking standards and the design requirements for parking facilities. Um, the, uh, fencing, screening, and landscape standards, and then also some modifications to, uh, temporary uses. We also included new design standards for metal buildings, um, especially to make them a little bit more compatible in residential areas and adjacent to residential uses. Um, we just included the recently approved carport standards. We didn't change them. We included them in the code. Um, and we also added tiny home regulations. And as part of the discussion I believe we had with council and also the Planning Commission, we wanted to ensure that the implementation of these tiny homes was, um, uh, uh, permissible, something that we could get permitted and inspect and that they really aligned with the type of use in terms of the design standards. I think we turned, talked about skirting. Um, and, uh, skirting may be appropriate where a tiny home is really more of an, uh, a manufactured home or something that's more ground set versus something that's an RV. So tiny homes can be both. They can either be an RV or they can be, uh, like it, the way that the building code looks, our building code looks at them is like a manufactured home. And that's how they would be either permitted or allowed. If a tiny home is an RV, it would be allowed where RVs, occupied RVs are allowed in the manufactured housing park or subdivision zones. Um, the, uh, in addition, if it was a tiny home that was meant to be a permanent home, that's something that would be treated per building code as a manufactured home. So we wanted to make sure that was perfectly clear and, and we believe we've, we've made that clarification appropriately. So non-conformities, we wanted to create a proper transition for compliance, very straightforward language. Um, we just tried to unwater down that, that particular section when it came to, uh, the language in it. Um, we also wanted to clarify when you could actually expand a non-conforming use and just make sure that's perfectly clear. Um, because there's a lot of different non-conforming situations and we just wanted to make sure they were clarified. Um, and we also reallocated the threshold for compliance. So whenever you, you hit that kind of threshold where you might have to comply because you're no longer gonna be non-conforming, um, we re-associated threshold for that compliance with ICC and County Improvement Values because those values stay current. Okay, and for your next and most favorite subject, signs. So our intent here was to try and create some context-based, uh, regulations. Something that we regulate time, manner, and place. So if you remember, uh, Reed, the Reed decision was all about content-based regulations. So, if you have to read the sign to figure out how to regulate it, then it's gonna be content-based and that's not. That's what we're trying to get away from. And just a little remember of the pop quiz we gave you down at the bottom. All those signs are the same kind of sign, even though they're advertising different things. So really, what we're looking for is content neutrality. We're trying to treat signs equally. Um, there has been a recent development that when I was first in front of you and we, when we discussed the sign module, this had not come out yet. Um, the decision had not been made, um, at, at that time. Um, and since then, uh, a decision in the Sixth U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals, which is not ours, um, but this is kind of, it's showing it's elevating to kind of the, potentially the federal level. The Supreme Court level, I should say, the highest level, is a case called Thomas v. Bright. And essentially, um, the regulating of on and off-premise signs is content-based, based on this decision. Um, I think that this is something we have to keep an eye on. Um, because when it comes to our next discussion, which is signs in the right-of-way, um, on and off-premise signs are exactly that. If your sign is not on your premise, then it's off-premise, right? And so signs in the right-of-way would be deemed off-premise signs. And so we'd need to kind of just keep an eye on this ruling and make sure that if it does elevate to the U.S. ruling and make sure that if it does elevate to the U.S. Supreme Court, that if we need to change our regulations, we do that. So without further ado, I think maybe now would be a time to potentially discuss signs in the right-of-way. And we did a little research on who's doing what right now. Who's updated their sign code? Are they allowing signs in the right-of-way? If not, or if so, how are they doing it, and if not, is it a straight prohibition? So what we found is there's a lot of jurisdictions that have not yet updated their sign code. And I'll walk through this table with you, it's got kind of a lot of information packed in it. First, I want to talk about the issues that we discussed though. So some of the issues that came up as we're discussing signs in general, but specifically signs in the right-of-way revolved around code enforcement and kind of the potential for the magnitude of that, what that would look like in different kinds of scenarios in terms of allowing signs in the right-of-way. The preservation of community character and clutter reduction, so the visual impacts of signs in the right-of-way. Freedom of speech was something that came up repeatedly and that was a really kind of a big piece of input that we received was that that was a view that was, it was deemed positive and that's something that people potentially wanted to see. And that there was values to community on both sides. So, so this is a, this is a particular issue that is very much an emerging issue that a lot of jurisdictions are grappling with right now. So of the communities we evaluated, only four of them have been updated, three of them allow signs in the right-of-way. And those three, which are Centennial, Castle Rock, and Pueblo, only really allow a very restricted amount of signs in the right-of-way. So for instance, Centennial allows signs in the right-of-way as part of their sign design program, and that's kind of likened to our master sign program here. Our, our sign program that we require for shopping centers and business parks and the like. Castle Rock only allows sidewalk signs and it's downtown, and that's kind of more likened to their kind of economic vitality efforts and trying to revitalize downtown and kind of get more walkability and whatnot. Pueblo is much the same, the only additional sign that they allow is a bus stop shelter sign. So that they can advertise on bus stop shelters, and so just to kind of give you an idea of what other jurisdictions are doing right now with allowing signs in the right-of-way, that it's really more heavily restricted. And Elizabeth just strictly prohibited them, and they did recently update their sign code. Some of the other jurisdictions that may or may not allow signs in the right-of-way, but I think the important thing is, is they haven't updated their, their sign codes, Colorado Springs, Larkspur, Monument, and Palmer Lake. So, so if you've driven through those communities and seen signs in the right-of-way, they may not be, you know, the best community to compare to in terms of a new sign code and how they've implemented right-of-way signage. So there are kind of a spectrum of options that I think that you have before you in terms of allowing signs in the right-of-way or not. I mean, because not allowing or prohibitions of signs in the right-of-way other than government-owned signs is an option. But, but in that spectrum, going from allowing them all outright to prohibiting them all, right? That's the edges of your spectrum. In the middle, there's kind of a range of options. And so one range of options would be to require prescriptions, for instance, you know, we have a curb setback requirement in the public right-of-way for signs now, I believe it's four feet. Honor the four feet and ensure that signs are set back from the curb at four feet. Ensure that ADA is being honored as well on the sidewalk side and where the right-of-way can allow for signs with those distances because some rights-of-way may be constrained. And not have those setback areas, that those right-of-ways may be areas where signs are allowed. And then we could, in terms of the size and the shape of that sign, we could regulate it based on that. And I should say, all of these signs in the right-of-way would require a permit and a revocable permit from the city, so that, that aspect of signage in the right-of-way would not change if you did decide to allow signs in the right-of-way.
Did you take into consideration that we've done a sign resolution about a year ago?
Absolutely, and that's
That's included in this.
Well, so what, in terms of the public hearing draft, what we allowed for signs in the right-of-way, and we've got a placeholder for another piece, but what we've allowed so far is government-owned signs, that's always been allowed. And that would be your traffic signs, you know, all kinds of government-owned signs. That being said, we do have a reserve section, and that's the section that we want to make sure that if we do get direction from council tonight to allow signs in the right-of-way, that we have a place for that. And we would write in that direction as, as recommended by, by council.
And just to add to that, in 2002 when we did do the zoning code amendment, a lot of that did come forward into this in terms of the size and allowances of signs on private property, however, because of federal changes at the Supreme Court level, there are some requirements that we still have to modify regardless of those changes that we made in 2012.
No, that's perfect, thank you. And I, and I think just to add a little bit to that, in terms of signs in the right-of-way, it's really this REED decision that's kind of made us kind of relook at our sign codes. Even if, I mean, there's some jurisdictions that adopted them right before the REED decision came out. For a lot of the reasons, I mean, sign codes are one of those things that they, they change and they evolve over time, they also, you know, imbibe the character of the business community and the area that they're trying to regulate signs for, so like Chrissy said, we took everything that y'all had worked on previous and we just, we, we tried to look at it from a REED lens and just made sure that the content-based material in your sign code was removed. And I know the REED decision kind of took out, I think I used the word flavor, a lot of the flavor in a lot of sign codes, and that's what we're trying to do, is trying to still have a lot of the abilities that the sign code had before, maybe, but with, without all of the content-based related words. That was, that's the, that's the challenge here with the REED decision. Any more questions? With signs, this is kind of a one of those discussions that is, is, has been difficult for a lot of communities, and I think in terms of a lot of recommendations from legal perspectives, it's kind of like, you know, if you want to allow signs in the right-of-way, be very particular and, and respective of your own plans and policies in terms of how you're going to do it. Because the REED decision did kind of make us relook at things in a way that we've never had to look at them before when it comes to signs. Yes?
You said it would be setback four feet from the curb or asphalt, I assume, from there, and a lot, a lot of right-of-ways have five to six feet of open space outside of that. And with the green belt, then the sidewalk, then it would be way off prohibiting most areas in town then?
In terms of a constrained right-of-way? Like not having the full amount of area to put that sign? And that, I mean, we couldn't analyze all of the, all of the right-of-ways in town, but that is a possibility that there's going to be a select few or more that don't really fit the mold for a, for a right-of-way sign based on the description I just had.
Yeah, there would be probably not very many that would be where you could put a sign.
And, and that kind of goes into kind of the, the range of spec, that spectrum that I was talking about. That's one way to do it, you could specify streets, specific street segments that you'd allow right-of-way signs on. You could say, like these other communities that I mentioned, you could say sidewalk signs are allowed. In certain zones, in certain areas, in business districts, in Old Town, you know. So there's just kind of this range of, of options, I think, that you have when it comes to regulating signs in the right-of-way. The prohibition is also an option, and I, I bring up Thomas v. Bright, which is the, the decision that was made in the Sixth Circuit only because this REED decision is, is one of those things, it's kind of a, a moving target. There will be more, kind of, I don't want to say there's going to be more litigation, but there's going to be more tests put to that, that particular Supreme Court decision that's gonna, that's going to make us look at our codes a little bit more when it comes to sign regulations in the future. It's not, it's not a, it's not all final, and it never really is when it comes to codes because they're living and breathing documents and they change with time too, so. It happens. When we get a new building code every few years, you know, this, you know, we have the same kind of conversations, codes change and they, they have to, they have to change with time. And this is just one of the, the issues that we're going to have to, to face in order to kind of move forward. Does anybody have any more questions about just kind of the way that other jurisdictions regulate signs, some of maybe our options? Do we want to talk about any options in particular, a little more?
Yeah, we're going to have to do it eventually. No, I'm just, I'm just curious, you said, you know, the ones that have a two by M, heavily restricted, so obviously they have some type of permitting process, right?
Yes.
Do you have any idea what those types, because I don't want our code enforcement officers to turn into sign police. You know, they have a lot of other things to do. So how do you do it without having that happen and spending a lot of staff time on it? Because a permit does take staff time and printing and approval and all that kind of stuff. So how are they addressing it, the ones that have it heavily restricted?
So the heavily, heavily restricted areas, so Centennial's the one that has the sign design program. And that's really if you come in and you have a big development and you have, you know, wayfinding needs where you might have to set a monument or a ground set sign at a driveway that's not on your premise and whatnot. You have a way to develop a sign program for a campus or a situation like that. But Castle Rock and Pueblo have actually specific areas where they allow A-frame or sandwich board signs. And it's in front of, it's directly in front of your business, I believe your sign can't be any more than six square feet, those A-frame signs are typically three by two. So they're six square feet typically. And they only allow them, you know, on the sidewalk in front of the business and they've, you know, they've, they've basically solidified a district or a little area where these signs could be used by businesses. The permitting processes would be very similar to what we do now with a revocable permit. They'd come in, they'd tell us where it's located, and then they'd get the revocable permit and have the requirements that are associated with that revocable permit.
And do they charge for those revocable permits?
I, I believe there's going to be a sign fee or a permit fee with every review. But I don't believe they were exorbitant, you know, in terms of
Do they put a timeline, and I, I don't think we're really, we're, I'm not thinking about the A-frame signs, I just don't see those as a big thing in our city. I mean, you see them occasionally, but, but it's the ones that are, you know, just all up and down for the hailstorm and the rough people and the builders and the political signs and, you know, the ones that are just lining our streets, and so I think that's kind of what we're more thinking of, is how do you permit those?
Well, and I think, so in the situations where these sidewalk signs are, are allowed to be used, it's a, you know, daytime gig, it's when the businesses are open, those signs are out, when they close, they bring them in. That makes enforcement really easy because if the sign's out after dark, then it gets picked up the next day or whatnot. But in terms of, of being able to regulate them here, we have to think time, place, manner. Regardless of what's on the sign. So the same, regardless of what's on the sign, the same time would need to be allowed for whatever sign, if we allowed signs in the right-of-way, it would be for all signs, so the time limit would be a one-size-fits-all. The manner would be kind of what I described in terms of the size, you know, what kind of sign would be allowing. And if you want to allow a site sign that's four square feet, which is your typical yard, kind of push the little, you know, the sign you put down in the dirt. You could do that. The thing is, is then you, you know, trying to, in terms of number, the quantity of signs in one location and visibility of those signs, competition amongst signs in a, in a particular area. Those kinds of things in terms of, of how you regulate, you could do sign separations, you could do those kinds of things, but the more layers of, of regulatory kind of pieces that you put on that, the more enforcement protocols that are maybe associated with that. So that's why I think a lot of these jurisdictions have said, in this very specific situation, we'll allow signs in the right-of-way, and it's very obvious when the code's not being met. Makes enforcement a much more easier task, a much more obvious task. And so this is, this is also part of the spectrum, right? The more that you allow and the less that you kind of regulate in that, the more enforcement that you could have associated with that. If you think of a scale, you know, you might get more allowances with signage, but you also have, might, might have more enforcement issues associated with that kind of regulatory approach. Versus being on the other end and prohibiting it outright, you have no enforcement issues associated with that, other than people just not minding the rules. Of not, a lot being allowed, but the, but the ones that don't mind the rules are really obvious, aren't they? Because there's a sign in the right-of-way and it shouldn't be. So this is really the spectrum that we're working with in terms of kind of the allowance of signs in the right-of-way and the association's positive or negative when it comes to that code enforcement responsibility.
So when you say we can regulate time, let's look at time. We can say that, and I'm just, I'm not making a decision here, I'm just throwing things out. If we can regulate time, we can say signs can only be in the public right-of-way from Friday at noon to Monday at noon. And that way it would cover the yard sales, it would cover the realtors that want to have an open house, somebody that wants to have their car for sale for the weekend, you know, something. The builders can put all their signs out there, and anything that's in the public right-of-way on those other times shouldn't be there, or we can say anytime, anyplace, anywhere. But what we can't say is certain businesses can have them out seven days a week and yard sale signs can only have them out on the weekends, right?
Exactly.
Okay, so we either have to set a timeframe that we only say we're only going to do it for four days is seventy, is forty-eight hour, forty-eight, ninety-six, thank you. Ninety-six hours or, okay, all right, I just, that was just a question. And because a lot of people were concerned about people having, you know, wanting to have a yard sale sign at the last minute or a realtor that got a listing on, say, Thursday afternoon and she wanted to have an open house, he, she wanted to have an open house really quick, you know, having the ability to do that. Okay, and then place again would be?
Where in the right-of-way it's located.
Where in the right-of-way, that would be if we wanted to have our, obviously, line of sight.
Right, we, we're not going to allow them in traffic circles, not in medians, not within four feet of the curb or the edge of asphalt.
They can't put them in the roundabout?
No.
Okay.
Those are, those are places where typically signs are, other than traffic signs, that signs are restricted anyway, so that's not an abnormal thing, and actually, that's, that's been in your code for a while.
A roundabout is new, and I haven't seen a sign there yet, but I'm just, it'll come, all right.
Unless it's a traffic sign.
Well, yeah.
Right. That also being said, you know, when it comes to the sign code and the changes we made on the private property side of things, we, we heard when we had our sign module discussion, both from City Council and from Planning Commission, and then in addition, some of the comments that came from the public and questions about the sign code, because that actually is probably one, one part of our zoning ordinance that the public uses the most, especially business owners. So we got some really good responses. But in regards to kind of how we have moved forward with those proposal for signs, private property signs, we've upped that, I think we allowed one sign on private property, you can use it however you want to, that was the original module discussion. What we went ahead and did was we said, you can have up to four yard signs, your garage sale sign, if you have a, a, you know, something in your, you want to sell your car. You've got a for-sell sign on your car, you've got a, a room for rent and you need to put up a for-rent sign. These are very small signs, you know, non-invasive signs, not lit or anything like that. But these are signs that people can use for whatever purpose they want to during the political season. People could use all four of them for whatever candidates they want, whenever they want. And I think that allowance also gives people more of an opportunity to utilize signs on their property for their purposes. I understand that sometimes directional signs may be needed for, you know, open houses or the garage sales or whatnot. But at least this way, when you're identifying, and thankfully we have Google Maps now on smartphones, right? Because those things help us find locations as well, but for the off-site signs, they just might not be in terms of, of other uses like advertising, they might not be as necessary because we've allowed people to put more signs on their property. The same thing with businesses, so what we did was we upped the site sign allowance, what we heard was some, maybe sometimes lit signs are needed, so what we did was we upped the allowance to allow for site signs to be both lit and unlit. And businesses have an unlimited number of those on-premise site signs that they can utilize for onsite wayfinding. If you have a, you know, a week sale or, you know, a sale for the week, these are things that you can do as part of your business and kind of part of your own sign program. That kind of gives you more, more sign, more of a sign allowance, but also kind of more flexibility with how you utilize your signage. So we were kind of thinking that maybe those additional allowances would provide people with more variety.
This would pretty much eliminate campaign signs for politics. You can't set them up on Friday night and take them down Sunday morning when you got them all over town. And a four-foot setback would mean there's almost no place to put them. So what we're doing there is pretty much eliminating political signs around town. Oh yeah, that'll show up real good. How many helices are there?
And understandably, so this was part of the, the REED, kind of how people have regulated things post-REED, is to really look at time, manner, and place, and the REED decision, I think if you remember, was about kind of the wayfinding signage for, I think it was a church event versus a real estate sign that was for some other kind of real estate event. They were allowed to be up at different times, four different times. And that's eventually what got taken all the way to the Supreme Court. We just want to make sure that if you do allow signs in the right-of-way, they're all allowed the same way. We just want to make sure that if you do allow signs in the right of way, they're all allowed the same way and the same time and the same manner.
So to get us to a point here, because it's, what is it you need?
So I think Steph needs direction now on whether or not to first allow signs in the right of way. And then two, if if you do decide to allow signs in the right of way, what does that look like? What would the prescriptions be associated with that? Are we looking at specific locations to allow these signs? Are we looking at a citywide allowance based on certain prescriptions that they can meet? That there's enough room in the, in the, in that landscape strip to handle a sign? Or, you know, do we want to kind of ratchet it down to a specific area? Or is there just kind of a look at maybe prohibiting them until, you know, more more can be, more research can be done in in terms of some of the other options that you have? What I would recommend is is potentially, you know, looking at allowing them, but with very specific prescriptions and keeping an eye on this other Supreme Court decision only because the on and off premise sign discussion is getting, kind of, I should say it's growing.
You know, I don't think you've you've covered anything that we didn't cover in the meetings. You know, I remember us being down to the the flags and stuff that they, unless they were damaged or were in bad shape, we allowed them. You know, I, once again, you know, that we we have to rely on the city clerk, Sylvia, for most of this and you know, I I guess that you you've said everything I want to hear that is available to us.
So I think at this point we need to, this, this is where I was a little confused with with bringing this tonight and because this sign thing just seemed like it's, if we decided to go ahead and let's let's let them allow them, but then there's like this whole other thing that we have to do unless I'm reading this wrong. And and I don't know how we can do all that and do this at the same time, so. I don't understand what I said either. So.
Too much to do to do it tonight.
Yeah, it seems like there's way too much, just the sign thing and and we're trying to do the whole code thing. Is that, if that makes sense? I don't know why we didn't do the sign thing just by itself before we got to this other part of the rest of the. Because if we're gonna allow them and then now it sounds like there's like a million other things now we have to. But I thought at the one point is either we allow them and then it's okay for everything. But then now I'm hearing, no, you have to have this, this, this and this and this for restrictions and.
That's entirely up to you. So the question is really, do we want to allow signs in the right of way, yes or no? And then that will dictate the path.
Which I think is where I'm I'm confused then.
I mean, if we want to allow signs in the right of way, then it's kind of city council's direction to staff is to, do we want to limit them? Do we not want to limit them? Is it a free for all?
What's the direction then for the council? Do we allow them or not in the right of way? And I will listen to arguments either for or against. Quickly, because I want to, I haven't even gotten to the public comment part of this yet, so.
One quick thing. Gordon Rick. Christie, you polled the planning commission on this issue of whether to allow signs or not. Can you share with council what planning's recommendation was?
The planning commission had recommended all seven members would allow the signs within the right of way. So that recommendation again was just kind of left up to city council's direction to decide if that's something that the city wants to pursue or not.
I think that's what we're saying, basically, or I am. You know, we we spent a lot of time on this. And, you know, there there was one lady that has American family over on the boulevard that she fought it to the end and she finally won where she put her sign. You know, I I think that there there's so many options that for us to think we can do anything with this tonight is is farfetched.
Okay, so you say allow signs.
I say that, you know.
In the right of way?
Yeah.
Okay. Because all the other stuff is is really been trumped by the 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 decision in the court, so. Anybody else?
Are we making a decision on the timeframe?
We're just doing right now, just let me.
Do we allow signs in the right of way, yes or no?
Right.
And depending on yes or no, if we say no, we're done.
Right.
If we say yes, then we go over to the next part that says.
Time, whatever.
Place and manner, how are we gonna do that?
So I've heard one, yes.
Yeah, we allow them in the right of way.
So you're a yes? Okay. Okay, another yes? Yes? He said yes. I frankly think where this is way too much, but we've gone down some other roads and I'm just like, I don't understand why we go. I honestly, I don't know. I, um, my opinion is really, I, it's a sign. I mean, you're gonna have people who want to push the issue with the sign, whether it's what's the content of the sign or what it's gonna look like, where it is. It doesn't matter what we do, I think. You're still gonna have people who are gonna push the issue, just to push the issue. That's just the world we live in nowadays instead of, you know, we have, we have something there, we we really would like everyone to to kind of jump on board with. Nope, there's gotta be that one, one guy or one lady. I would say no, just in, in in interest of then preventing all the other stuff that I think is gonna come up. In the history of of being up here and one little decision then blows up into nuclear war. And so that's the only reason why I would say no. Otherwise, I'm okay with signs. I I really don't see the issue. For me, it's really the one person that's gonna push the issue and 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 want to be that person. Again, we're in that day and age now where someone's always gotta push the issue and I don't know why. So I'm okay with them, to be honest. So I think we, you got your direction is yes on the signs.
Okay. So Steph can make a kind of a general recommendation based on on how you regulate them today, kind of what that would look like in a post-read world. So if you were to allow them kind of the way you do today, we would still be honoring this four-foot setback from the edge of curb or asphalt, whatever, whatever, if I'm right, I think it's four feet. And then the ADA would need to be honored as well. So you wouldn't want signs to encroach into the sidewalk realm because you want that ADA route to be, continue to be accessible. In addition, you want to make sure that the time, place, manner pieces are taken care of. So I I'm not quite sure what the time is for signs in the right of way right now and I can, I can double check with staff about that. But the manner could be that they're all less than four square feet in area and that they're all less than two, three feet, excuse me, in height. The other kind of visual thing that we need to keep intact is the line of sight. So you want to make sure these, these signs are short enough to stay out of people's line of sight when they're turning and and making turning movements on the road. So of those prescriptions, those kind of give you an area in general in the right of way where a sign could be located. Now to talk about constraints in the right of way, there may be substandard right of way widths that don't allow for a lawn area to house a sign like we just talked about. There may be others that do, but what this does require is it requires the sign poster to go out and investigate the situation for their signage. Come to the city with an application that says, I can meet your requirements and here's where I'm gonna put it. And that would kind of in general be the the process by which they'd go through to get that put into place. And the prescriptions, the hard edges by which they'd understand how to go do that. That all being said, you know, specific signs, we need the, you know, what's on the sign and whatnot. The kind of environment for code enforcement that may create is that they now have a map for what signs were allowed, therefore kind of showing what signs weren't allowed and being able to pull those signs if they had not been permitted. So that would be one, one way to do it as well. Also restricting the number of signs that any one sign permittee could obtain at any one time, which I believe is in your current regulations as well, is kind of another edge we could put on that allowance.
Really hard when you have a political candidate or and a thing going on because they just hand out signs. And the candidate or the candidate committee may come down and say, we're gonna put twenty-five signs out, we're gonna put them in these twenty places. But they may hand out a hundred signs and then the people they hand out the signs to, you can't control
how or
how or where they put them. You can say to them, please put this in your yard, but if they decide to, oh, well, it would be better down here. You can't control that, so.
Right.
Yeah.
And those, I mean, those like you, like I kind of mentioned, those would be the the kind of signs that if they weren't permitted.
So if if we were to say a four square foot sign would be the maximum and then candidates or or businesses like such as builders could not put up four by eight signs, is that correct? Or they could be just taken down?
In terms of signs in the right of way.
In the right, yeah.
Would all be one size fits all. So you're right, in terms of the description and the comparison that you made.
I I would lean towards pretty much what we would call a standard political sign, the maximum height, you know, the four by four. If you can't get your information on there, it's too much for a sign, people driving by.
I would agree. I would, I would venture exactly to keep it simple. So that people who may not agree with the sign code don't think there's an agenda here. For me, it's let's keep it simple, let's keep it enforceable legally and and fair for everybody and not for one particular person, one particular group. But it's gonna be the same across the board and and realize this decision is is intent and clearly just for that. Because when we did do the sign thing, it was, you know, you had every interest group of, this is why my sign should be allowed and 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 that's, I guess, what I'm I'm afraid of, if that makes sense, so. Some of those things that you mentioned, I think would be okay. I don't know where everybody else is on that, but.
And then the three foot height?
Yeah, I, yeah.
And the three foot height is the top of the sign sticking out of the ground, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
From ground to top, right?
Right, okay.
And that's to include the wire? And I go back to political signs because some companies will give you almost a three-foot long wire and others will, it'll be shorter, so.
From the ground to the top of the sign.
Okay.
And in your vehicle, you should be able to see over it. That's the whole point of that height restriction is for you in a vehicle to be able to see over it, see your line of sight.
Yeah.
So if we've got that covers size then, right? Four, no bit longer than four by four and three feet off the ground, it would cover its size? I mean, four feet square.
Yeah.
Four feet square, two by two, okay?
One by four.
Two by two, sounds like an art.
Four foot square.
Four foot square.
Four square foot.
Four square foot.
Two by two, do I hear three by three? Okay, so that's four square feet, that's right. Triangle shaped, whatever, but it can't be higher than three feet, okay? All right. So that's size off it. Okay, then we have, we have time, place and manner. So time to me is is the toughest one because I understand what Richard said, you know, ninety-six hours, and I just threw that out there. And.
That was kind of our bandit program anyway, wasn't it?
That was intended for for brick and mortar stores to be able to put signs, put signs out on the weekends, you know, I just was throwing that out there as.
I'm okay with that. I I thought that was reasonable. Unless someone is absolutely, no, but.
Clear parameters.
It was reasonable when we had different signs, times for different signs. Now, if you're gonna do that for everybody, political signs are almost a wash. You can't put out fifty signs on Friday night and pick them all up Sunday and put them out the next Friday. It's just, it's not.
Can we make a distinction on that? No?
One size fits all.
Really?
Can you say, can you say like from a six-week period, they can have them out seven days a week and the rest of the time it's ninety-six hours?
Can we make one time of the year?
Yeah, that's what you're saying.
You know, like maybe in the primary season in say March and then.
Even though we'd get stuck with other people's signs too at the same time.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
Well, I think it needs.
That's an important point to make is, is if you do allow for an extended period of time within one, you know, within the year period for whatever purpose, that you are allowing all, everybody else to put signs.
Right, and I'm not saying we're limiting them. I'm just saying in the month of, since March is primary season, okay, so I'm throwing this out as.
Well, let's just go with November, though. Let's go with the.
October, you mean?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're saying.
In October, signs can be out seven days a week and other than that, signs are out ninety-six hours.
Yeah, that works.
It's longer, but you still have to get permits, right?
Yeah.
Yes, they still have to pull permits.
This is the time, manner, placing. And and the reason for that is, is and and honestly, I don't know that, okay, it's October, every business is gonna throw their stuff out. It's really intended for the political. Although we realize businesses want to throw them out, they can. But I I think the reality is.
They have to.
Ballots are coming out now, the second and third weeks of October, something like that, so. I I don't know, I'm, it's just an idea I'm throwing out there.
That's my, been my concern with the sign thing is the political signs, as much as we we get tired of them and mine were out there too, I'm not gonna, but you know, it is a time to get people's name out there and sometimes that's the only time they can get their name out there.
If we did that, it might also make it equitable, fair and keep it reasonable in the political signs.
Right.
Have somebody put those out three months.
Right. They'd only be out one month and everybody had the same amount of advantage.
Which is, which is similar to what we had before, but we restricted it just for political signs, which we can't do anymore. So we're trying to find a way to work within the parameters that we have now.
Right.
First Wednesday. Give them a chance to get out.
And then the primary, everybody, would you do anything in the primary season?
No.
We don't down here, I mean, we get the big.
Well, you, oh, you definitely are gonna have them in the, you know, but.
I don't see those as much during primaries here.
Our, our primary is now in March. I want to say it's March third.
Too many signs around here for.
Presidential primaries, March third. They can put them out on the weekend, okay. If you've got that much money to run for president, you got, you can have a sign committee, huh? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, that works.
All right, so, so we're looking at time, ninety, everybody, ninety-six hours? Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday?
Right.
And we'll figure out the exact time later and then.
I like the twelve to twelve.
Twelve to twelve? Twelve noon Friday to twelve noon Monday? And let me tell you, I've had mine thrown out because I forgot to pick them up. It's the life of the party, you know?
And then October till the day after election. And that's fair.
October first to whatever that Wednesday is after the election.
Give them a chance to get out and get them.
That's like one day after the election, is that what you're saying?
That's all they need.
We pick ours up the night of, don't we?
We all picked up.
I was so wired after it, I was up till two o'clock picking up, but it helped me relax. I mean, I was up.
Okay, does that give you direction on time?
I, I think you gave me direction on time, place and manner. I think you gave me direction on all of them.
And I may need help at the very end on the, the over November timeframe. Signs in the right of way, four square feet, three feet in height, allowed noon to noon, Friday at noon to Monday at noon. Except for the month of October, which is allowed seven days a week. All signs have to have a revocable permit, but then there's discussion about November, but I don't.
He just said the Wednesday after the election. So the election's this first Tuesday in November, so the first Wednesday in November.
First Wednesday.
Yeah, would.
First Wednesday in November.
You know what?
So we can just put a date of October first through whichever that Wednesday is after election.
Yeah, because you can't say the first Wednesday depending on how the month falls.
We can do that.
Kimberly's yawning, okay. All right, is that enough?
That is as simple as I think we can get. So yes, that is the direction that staff needed to write that section.
So we're good.
We are good.
But, but they still have to pull a permit?
They still have to get a revocable permit.
Okay.
And staff will have to figure out how we handle the enforcement. I'm sorry, what?
They had a thing in here that said they should turn in picture and location. I think that's great.
And we just have to modify our permit in order to do so.
They know right away who didn't do it. If they give a picture.
And I, I think that should be, they can do it electronically.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Heard my name.
Yeah, thank you for getting us through that.
Oh, anytime.
All right, no, seriously, thank you for getting us through that because I thought it was gonna be ten times worse.
Right.
Okay, so that's a sign, is that it?
That was it on signs.
Okay.
We just got a little bit left.
Well, let me ask public, since it is a public item, are you okay with where the direction we've given on the signs?
Oh, Gordon Rick. Gordon Rick respectfully disagree. The way the code was written that came out of planning was you could have ten weeks a year, you could put out your sign. Could be any combination of days. It could be Monday through Friday for seventy weekends. It could be ten weeks consecutive, however the individual wanted to do it, that was their time limit.
Give me a minute, give me a minute to find that. Give me a minute, give me a minute to find that because I'm not quite sure that's what was meant because Kristy and I actually discussed that earlier. But we discussed several pages, so give us a few minutes to find the page, please.
Okay, I don't have the, the copy with me, but that's what I remember from reading.
I think.
I agree with you on the size, the four by four, I agree with you on the three height, I agree with the ADA. The four feet is problematic from the standpoint as Mr. Applegate said, you're eliminating ninety percent of the locations.
Two feet would be fine, but.
Two feet's fine, it's just the.
But I think the two feet then cuts in the ADA.
The only problems I've ever seen around town with ADA signs are the two or three businesses that have the A-frame signs. And there's one that loves to put it in the corner here, right in the ADA ramp, there's one on eighty-five that quite frequently, it's in the middle of the sidewalk, you know. So that can be easily enforced.
I haven't seen any signs, I didn't see any signs this election year that were blocking any ADA in town.
No, they're in the grass and the weeds.
That's just my personal opinion. You're the council, you get.
The number of days is unenforceable because you wouldn't know who did it each weekend, who did it.
And that, that would create a ton of work, I think, for code enforcement.
Almost impossible to enforce.
That, that was just the way it was written in the draft that I saw.
Yeah, that, I, that, that's too hard to enforce, I think. Right.
You keep track of them, that would count days.
And, and we threw a bunch, I mean, we threw a bunch of ideas out and different things, so.
Yeah, okay.
None of them came back to code enforcement, we'd have to have one code enforcement person. All they did was signs.
Yeah.
I mean.
Okay, anybody else?
Kristy, are you finding that?
Okay.
I actually, did you find it?
Yep.
Okay.
So this is actually for on-premise site signs.
Yes.
But this is actually not signs in the right away or whatnot. We did talk about the timelines and that, we did actually incorporate that ten week timeline into, people who wanted to put signs on their property, they could have those up for ten weeks. That's the timeline we adopted in there, but that's for private property.
Right, and so it was more for the person that wants to put a blimp up or something along.
And that's also under temporary signs, the ten weeks.
Yeah, so, yeah, it wasn't right away signs, yeah.
Correct, not right away signs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and finish the rest of your.
Presentation. You'll be happy to move on from signs, I'm sure. And actually, we just have the two last modules to discuss, the second to last one being administration and procedures. I don't know if you've heard me say this, but I've, I've said it a million times, the definition section of our code to me is the most important. It defines every term in our zoning code that had, needs to be defined. And anytime there's a question about what does this section of the code mean, the first place that we go to is the definition section. So we really wanted to make that robust, we, we really beefed it up and, and went through it with a fine tooth comb and, and made sure that the definitions that we need in there are in there. We also added, deleted, and revised a lot of definitions, and in fact, we have, I think, three more for you, just to kind of mention tonight. So structure and organization, new formatting, cross referencing, this is a completely different kind of document than you previously had. It has a lot of internal cross referencing, new pagination, new numbering, it's, it's been refreshed and updated that way. So that ends my presentation in terms of the summary of the public hearing draft. I wanna go into the, the planning commission's recommendations next. So the planning commission did recommend approval of the zoning ordinance and they had four conditions of approval. So the first one was to find a way to grant PUDs a pathway to allow home-based businesses. Understanding some of the PUDs and the city didn't really include home-based businesses originally in their allowances. They just didn't foresee them as being a necessary item. And so if things like private covenants or, or agreements like that would allow a person to have a home-based business, we wanted to provide that ability or a path to be able to do that. We're not trying to supersede any covenants or anything like that. But if somebody could do it in a PUD, we wanted to give them a pathway to be able to do it. So we provided some revisions to the home-based business section of the code as proposed into that table in that section. Additionally, there was a lot of conversation regarding vehicles as signs and when they would be allowed and when they wouldn't. And the whole purpose of this provision was to ensure that vehicle wasn't used as a sign structure. So, you know, that basically, if, if a sign was placed on a vehicle that was part of normal business operations, that was not what we were trying to include in this provision, so we really wanted to flush through it and clarify this intention. So we deleted a section that had been previously in the sign code that kind of muddied the water a little bit in terms of this provision. We added unlawful vehicle signs, this specific section, we would recommend adding, accepting vehicles regularly operated as part of the business and leaving the business premises on a regular basis for business purpose. This would be a fleet vehicle with the business's name on it, right?
Like rotor ruder.
Yes, exactly, and, and there's no reason why we would restrict a business from being able to put those signed, signs on its vehicles. And then we wanted to make sure that this exception was also put in our definition of unlawful vehicle sign, which we've, we've added a definition for in our definition section, we just wanted to make sure that this exception in there was perfectly clear, that we're accepting these, these types of, of signs for businesses.
Wrap your car and just let it park in front of the street.
That's exactly what we're saying.
But you can wrap your car and drive it around town.
If you wrap your car and drive it around town, it is part of your business.
Yes.
That's a different thing than using a car as a sign structure.
Right, but you can't wrap it and then just park it.
What if that rotor ruder truck sat there for a whole weekend? That'd be more than twenty-four hours. This should be for ones that the intention was for the vehicle to be a sign. That would be better wording.
Okay. So actually, let me go, so what I did was I put the full set of language in your packet and I didn't wanna put a whole, whole bunch of words on your slides. So what I'll go ahead and do is I'll make sure that the definition, accepting, okay. We, okay, I, I wanna make sure that this provision is actually in the definition that we're recommending, so a vehicle, so this is the accepting exceptions. So accepting vehicles regularly operated as part of the business and leaving the business premises on a regular basis for business, for a business purpose, and where the primary purpose, purpose of such a vehicle shall not be for the display of signs. So as long as the primary purpose of that vehicle is not to be a sign, then rotor ruder can be parked over the weekend, no issues.
Okay.
Okay. Just, I, I really, I thought that that provision was in there because we were really trying to provide some edges around that.
Okay.
Absolutely, all right.
Eight-four hour thing, is that to coincide with the code enforcement that we have?
Absolutely.
For trailers being, RVs being parked on the street?
No, that's different.
Oh, okay.
But it's the same kind of timeline in terms of being able to ensure that a vehicle is, you can tell if something's been parked for twenty-four hours, it's a, it's a time limit, essentially. The third was a, a conversation we also had with the, the planning commission about potentially allowing modular dwellings in the LLR zone, which is the large lot residential zone. And the discussion about modular dwellings was, you know, potentially, they could be a different, just kind of housing product type that could be available to a person and on a large lot, that housing type seems like it could be compatible. So that was a planning commission recommendation as well, and then planning commission adopted a staff's recommendation, or, excuse me, a staff recommended condition, which was to allow us to make scribners edits, so non-substantive edits. If we have to add a semicolon instead of a comma, or if we have to capitalize a word, we wouldn't wanna have to burden you with that kind of change, making that kind of change. Big changes, of course, would come to you, substantive changes would come to you, but something like that, that's more of a scribe issue, we wanted to make sure to be able to do before we post it out for everybody. So I think I had mentioned, we had some additional kind of after testing, post-testing, kind of areas where we'd feel a lot more comfortable if we just tweaked the definition a little bit more. So in terms of, there is a prohibition, or excuse me, an exemption for flags in the sign code. The way they're described and were previously described in the sign code was they're government flags. Because the term government could be recognized as a content-based regulation, we're recommending we just take that word out. These are the questions that we get when we test and they're, they're really good and sometimes it's like, well, better to be safe than sorry, right? Additionally, we have a definition for window sign, at the very end of that definition, we talk about, or other customer information. The fact that we were talking about information, even though it's really hard not to talk about information actually being on a sign. But that's what Reed has left us with, so we just wanna take that, that little statement out. The definition stands just fine on its own without that little descriptor in it. And then in addition, we've had some questions about our childcare definitions, and while they do align with the state definitions, we feel like it, it's just better to just refer to the CRS sections that define this because the state especially has recently changed some of these definitions. Some of the, the number of children you can have and the different kinds of facilities. And rather than try and keep up with the state's changes, we would just refer to the CRS and let our code do it just by reference. So we would be changing the reference to childcare facilities and family, child, it's, it's family childcare home, excuse me, and just referring those to the, the specific sections of the CRS where they're located. And CRS is Colorado Revised Statute, so that's big code governing our regulations as well. And that is the final slide of my presentation. In addition to the seventh recommendation, what I think I would also recommend is the discussion that we just had about signs be added as an eighth condition, recommended condition of approval.
On that lawsuits that you talked about now, we can revisit that later on content, where if there's profanity on the sign, but we can't do that until that lawsuit's settled, right?
So the current court proceeding is more so about on and off premise signs, so whether or not a sign's on your property or it's off your property right now, that's kind of what's being debated in the courts. When it comes to, I believe, kind of how we, and, and let me just make sure I understand your question. Is it more so about?
No, he's just asking if we have to wait for the court decision to be done before we attack.
No, the court decision for Reed's already done, so we're, when it comes to signs in the right away, when it comes to time, manner, place regulations, we.
But you said we couldn't anything about content, that's what I was talking about.
We can't regulate on the basis of content.
That's what I'm saying, until that's done, then we can revisit it about that.
No.
If they win.
The Supreme Court's kinda like.
It's already done, it's already done.
They're kind of the fine day when it comes.
What are those lawsuits about then?
So the lawsuit that, the Thomas v. Bright, the newest lawsuit is about on and off premise signs, and it kinda takes this Reed.
Well, what about on and off premise signs?
So that's what, that's what we kinda have to keep our eye on now because what's kind of percolating up is, is on and off premise signs could be deemed content-based. Reed is the content-based decision that's making us kind of relook at our sign regulations. Thomas v. Bright could make us look at on and off premise signs later. It hasn't gone up to the Supreme Court yet, we're not forced to kind of adhere to those, those regulations yet, but it's something that we're gonna have to keep our eye on.
Because it will get there.
So the state of Tennessee had really specific things that you could put, if you had a property next to a state highway, they had really specific things that you could, I did a little research.
Yes.
So I'm probably not gonna explain it very well, but they had really specific things you could put on the sign. And you could, if, if there was a sponsored event by the state, you could put an ad on it, but if it wasn't, then you couldn't. And some guy put one that wasn't a sponsored event, he just wanted to drive more business to his whatever.
It was, I heart the Olympics.
I, I love the Olympics, that was it, and, and the state came through and said, that's not a regulated sign, and he sued him and that's what this is all about because he has the right to put a sign on his own private property that states what he wants it to state, even if it instincts to a state highway. So we don't have to deal with that yet because it's only in the regional court.
So he's the guy that pushed the issue, okay.
That's the guy that pushed the issue.
Okay, so, any.
We're only, so we don't have to deal with that until it goes up.
Um, from counsel on this. Public.
Can we go back to the recommendations from the planning and then I had a couple of questions out of here and y'all should be really lucky, I really reduced my questions, so, thank you, Kristy. Not that one, home-based business, I'm fine.
Number two?
Um, yeah, modular home.
No.
Three, three.
Okay. So how do you define a modular dwelling unit?
In terms of, do we have a definition in our code?
Yes.
Because I would think that probably everybody in here could probably give a little bit definition of what, how we define a modular dwelling unit.
And I'm, like, I, I know manufactured home has a mention of modular. And I just wanna make sure that it's not the same because we don't have a, we have a module structure and then we have different types of manufactured homes. A module structure would be a factory fabricated, transportable building or major component, which would be walls, those kinds of things.
Right, and that's how I think of a modular dwelling unit is like a Sears house years ago where Dell came and you just put the pieces together.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be.
Right, and, and in terms of like kind of how they're building modular units today, I, I, I'll, I'll give you an example of a, a modular development that I permitted was a senior housing duplex development. And in order to drive down the costs of those units, they did modular development in order to kind of save time in inspections and permitting and all the like, so modular buildings today are a little bit, they, they've kind of, I guess you could say they've changed over the years and they're, they're dealt with much differently now. And I believe they go through state inspections in terms of ma, ensuring that they've been constructed properly. And so there's a process by which they would go through to get this.
I, I, we just need the answer, what is a module?
Yes, so the definition module was the, what I, what I had read previously.
Well, I wanna make sure we understand what we're, we're, they recommended because some people think of a modular home as a, a mobile home, some people think of it as a, I mean, I just wanna make sure it's all understood. So if it comes in in pieces and we're putting it together on the property and it's, you know, similar to a stick built, but not really, I'm okay.
Most of them think of single wides and double wides, announced tiny homes.
Yeah, so.
It's in there, right?
Let me read the full definition, and I think this might actually answer a couple of the questions that I've heard. So a factory fabricated, transportable building or major component thereof designed for use by itself or for incorporation with similar units onsite into a structure for residential, commercial, educational, or industrial use. Their lack of an integral chassis or permanent hitch to a future, to, excuse me, all future movement distinguishes them from manufactured housing. So this is actually, this is speaking exactly what we're, this is speaking to exactly what we're talking about in terms of a module, modular building.
So we're talking about something, they're gonna bring the pieces in, they're gonna have a foundation that they mount these pieces onto and it's gonna look like a house.
And I think that would probably more align with manufactured home definition.
And that, I was gonna say, there's a, there's a, I think in the manufactured housing section, there's also a mention of modular structures as it relates to the manufactured housing.
And this is their primary dwelling unit?
Yes, it would be.
Okay.
It would be an allowed primary dwelling unit.
Can you say permanently placed?
We could add permanently placed to the definition, yes.
That way it won't have wheels under it.
Yes.
That would actually solve the confusion. I think that would actually solve the confusion.
Okay.
You have one more question?
Only one?
I don't know, you said you had two, a couple of questions.
Oh, I just, I wanted to make sure we had some of the definitions that I had asked questions for the last time. In terms of, for example, multifamily residential, it says a conditional use could be a detoxification center, a healthcare support facility, and a homeless shelter.
And those were previously permitted uses, and we moved them to the conditional use section as a result of conversations during the module discussions.
And so anything that's a conditional use would have to go through planning?
Yes, it would go through the conditional, the full conditional use process.
Okay, so if somebody came in and they wanted to put a methadone clinic in a.
Yes, that's what she's saying.
I'm, I'm making sure, okay. All right, and then.
I mean, you could ask the question three times, but the answer's gonna be the same.
All right, all right. And then on the section seventeen oh nine oh five oh, number of off-street parking spaces, when it talks about housing exclusively for elderly care, I think it would make things be a little bit more developable if we took it down from two parking spaces per unit and did one parking space per unit, plus one space for each full-time employee at peak times and then one, plus guest parking, one per three dwelling units. I just think, you know, two cars, I don't know a lot of residential homes that have two cars per person in there, and I think that would help with that restriction. And that's signs, that's signs, that's signs. I wanted to, and make sure people understand the differences between tiny homes. If they're gonna put a tiny home on a lot, that it's really gonna be a tiny cabin, right? It's not gonna be on wheels, if they want their tiny home. If they want their tiny home on wheels and they want to live in it, it's in a RV park or a tiny home community. So they can't just pull a tiny home onto their lot and have people live in it. Is that correct?
The tiny home on wheels would need to be in a place where our occupied RVs are allowed, which is the mobile home, district, zoning districts.
Right, so if they had a tiny home and then they, they wanted to not live in it anymore, then they would have to come into compliance and have sanitation, water, utilities, and that kind of things.
Right, it's the difference between an RV versus a tiny home in this case, yes.
Okay, alrighty. And then, Kristy, there was one more part about a second dwelling unit on a unit, on a property?
And that was both in LR and RA for a, for a, an additional, or for a secondary dwelling unit.
Right, I'd like to discuss what that secondary dwelling unit could be made of. And I, if we could find the page, please. And I just, I thought I had it marked, but I can't seem to find it, so.
It's in two, two places, so it's going to be. Page nine?
I'm sorry?
Nine B one eight, page nine, letter B, actually, it's chapter seventeen four and then B one A. Permitted principal uses, single-family detached dwelling units, not including manufactured homes, and tiny homes as specified in our new tiny home chapter.
Right, but there was another type of unit?
So in D, we talk about development standards. And it says, one secondary dwelling unit in accordance with our tiny home chapter may be located on lots, five acres or more of total lot area, provided it does not exceed the gross floor area of the primary dwelling unit.
Right, I'm done with tiny homes. I want to know the other type of unit because I thought I saw somewhere where they could move a trailer onto a large lot unit.
Okay.
That couldn't be longer than nine, couldn't be older than nine years of age.
You're in the manufactured housing section.
All right.
Um, and I do believe, let's see. Matt?
That's in section seventeen oh four sixty B one A. Where it says that the manufactured home has to be constructed no more than ten years prior to the effective date of this title.
What page is that?
Uh, eighteen.
Oh, eighteen, way back there.
That'll be right around that in your red lines.
Okay.
And that actually is not, that section hasn't changed from the previous code. We didn't, we didn't tinker with that at all.
Okay, alrighty. So anybody that has a large lot at this point in time and they want to move a mobile home onto it and use it as a secondary unit, as long as it's not nine years of age or older.
So the secondary unit, if we're going back to that section in the code, the secondary unit specifically points to tiny homes. So your secondary unit, as, as stated here, has to be a tiny home. If you want to move your manufactured home and it meets all these prescriptions to one of these lots, it would be the only home on this lot. In terms of, it, it, you know, unless it was also a tiny home, but I don't, I'm not sure that many manufactured homes could meet that requirement.
So are we good on that?
If anybody else has a turn, has questions.
Okay, um, public? I saw Gordon wanted to get up earlier.
This'll take a minute, you might want to sit down.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so for the past couple of months, I've been having conversations with staff. One of the complaints that I've personally received from the business community is that requests for variance that go through the Board of Adjustments take too long. There's a lot of times to where they can't get the board together, lack of quorum, it takes a long time for them to get together. Uh, I suggested to staff that they come up with an administrative review board for businesses consisting of the economic development director, the planning director, and the city manager. They could meet on a weekly basis and knock these kinds of things out. Staff's feedback to me was they weren't comfortable with that. Essentially, it put the staff in the process in the position of overriding the, the ordinance or overriding direction of council, of the, of the city council. They weren't comfortable with that. They came back to me with, well, let's have a hearing officer, and their suggestion was the municipal judge. There's a lot of problems with that. Uh, then it was suggested maybe having council members as hearing officers. What I would suggest is, based on feedback from McCool, is other communities have combined the Board of Adjustment with the Planning Commission uh, because it's easier for them to staff one board rather than two. They're more intimately familiar with the zoning ordinance, with the processes that go through. They're consistently hearing these kinds of issues and nor more, uh, reactive to requests for variances. I did not bring it up earlier in the process because I was still getting, going back and forth with staff. I did not want to bring it up with the Planning Commission because I wanted to wait until staff had come one way or the other. We're at the final leg of the game, so I'm making that recommendation. It's just a personal recommendation for me, it's your decision, but I think we would be better served by combining the Board of Adjustment with the Planning Commission.
I think there needs to be some discussion around that, I don't know that that's tonight. Um, cause I've heard the same complaints as well. And frankly, when, when the Board Adjustment needs to be pulled, we're lucky if we can pull three people that are currently supposedly sitting there. And so there's just, I think there's an issue that, that needs to be dealt with, and we probably need to tackle that sooner rather than later. But, um, uh, I think it's a good point. Um, I don't know that I want to have that discussion right now.
Totally understand, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, but, uh, in, in, a lot of it came up really because of like the carport stuff and, and, uh, and just some of the, also some of the issues that we've been having with businesses as they're trying to come in and, and things need to be different and, and all these different pieces and parts and the amount of work that goes into getting those boards together, and then also timelines. Uh, when a business, they're, they're wanting to get certain places, um, but then all of a sudden wait. We have to wait thirty days because we can't get the board together today. And so, um, I think maybe getting with economic development, um, and, and, and planning to figure out what's going to be the quicker way to make this process more efficient.
And we have this, we have discussed, and as Mr. Rick pointed out, other options. Um, we've, we've brainstormed different solutions. Uh, and so I think when the, if, and when the time comes, if, if it's not tonight, we can certainly pursue all those options. But, but the one that we were, um, uh, discussing was the, the hearing officer and, and that kind of, um, from staff side and from kind of my perspective creates a, a, a safer situation. And so we can have that discussion later. Um, but that's, but, but we have, we have been talking through the best way to kind of uh, address this variance issue that we seem to be having. And so, um, we, we are engaged in, in trying to figure out the best solution for that.
And I think, um, I'm trying to look at our strategic plan, it's not in there. Uh, we could probably figure out a, a spot for it, but, um, this should be something that we should probably tackle within the first month or two of the year. Okay, I think having the pros and cons of, of how that looks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Anybody else?
I was just going to say, I spoke with Craig Dempsey today from the county. And the way they do it for their variance is if it's less, less than twenty percent of the project they're requesting a variance on, that the, um, planning director, Craig, has the ability to make that decision without it having to go through their Board of Adjustments. Um, however, there is a fee for it because that planning commission, planning person is being required to put in more time to, to make that decision. So that's just another option that I heard of today, too.
Okay. Okay, all right.
So I think we're at final recommendations.
Okay.
And in addition to the seven that we noted tonight in the actual presentation, I think I had three more that I heard as a result. So number eight would be this, the right of way allowance for signage and the different prescriptions we associated with that, which were time, manor, place being cannot exceed four square feet, um, three feet in height, uh, the safety setbacks and location requirements. Um, and I think what we can do is double check with the engineering staff and just make sure if that four feet can be skinny down at all, we'll just double check, we want to make sure we're, you know, honoring the safety, you know, necessities. So, um, if we can skinny that up, we, we will a little bit, but four feet, four feet is what I believe the code says today. Um, that it can't be over a sidewalk or impact ADA. Um, we've got, and I'm going to look at Kristy's notes because I think she wrote this down perfectly. Um, but there is a time limit for ninety-six hours, twelve noon Friday to twelve noon Monday. Um, with the exception of the month of October and the first Wednesday of November, which we'll pull out a calendar and figure out what that date specific is. Um, and then, so that was number eight. And then number nine was to add per, uh, put on a permanent foundation to the definition of module structure. And then one parking space for elderly parking instead of two, that's currently proposed. I'm not, okay, I'm, I'm definitely going to look at Kristy's notes for that. And we will make sure that the date specific is in the code. And when it comes back to you for second reading, we'll, we'll highlight it for you.
Okay.
Wonderful.
You good? Okay. Um, with that, as long as the summary seems okay, close the public hearing. And a decision needs to be made on first reading. Tonight would be helpful.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Applegate?
What's the number of this thing?
One seven four two.
Oh, yeah. I recommend that we approve ordinance one seven four two.
And Mr. Coke? We have a motion and second for approval, please vote.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's a lot of stuff. Um, thanks again to Sharon for helping us with that sign thing because I was really worried. Um, correspondence, comments, ex officer reports, I'm going to start with Todd. Nothing, uh, Mr. Johnson?
All right, just real quick.
Um, I've got a, uh, one of the things that's kind of personal to me is I serve on the board for Reach Pike's Peak, who does really good, uh, work in our community, um, for, uh, for people kind of facing some tough financial times due to their circumstances. We're having a, we're calling the First Annual Breakfast for Reach Pike's Peak, December sixth, um, coordinating with the Fountain Chamber of Commerce. Uh, we're, they're kind of adjusting their, uh, their regular breakfasts to, to host Reach Pike's Peak. Um, so come out and join that, that's, uh, seven o'clock in the morning for all the early risers at the Beckett Event Center on, uh, on December sixth. So it should be a really great event, should be really fun, um, to support a great, uh, local organization.
Yeah.
But that's all I have.
Thank you for.
It's, the chamber meeting is moving over to the Beckett Event Center. At seven, seven AM at the Beckett Center.
I think it's free, I thought they said.
It's free, uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, probably.
Yeah, it, it's free to attend the breakfast, but, but, uh. To help all the, all the people in our community, too. That's all I have.
All right, Chief Maxson? Uh, I did want to mention, I'm going to speak for the entire council, so, um, uh, again, and, and I'm going to speak to the entirety of the community and, and what's best for, um, let's start here in Fountain. Um, but, uh, a lot of, again, misinformation went out about the fires that we fought. To, our hydrants weren't working, we had no water, I don't know, a bunch of different things, and absolutely none of it was true. Um, please, again, go to the source, ask the question rather than putting all this stuff out and not knowing really what's going on. Uh, because, uh, a lot of people got really worried and thought we were in a crisis. And I had to talk a few people, um, off the ledge and, and, and get them to understand that, no, it's, it wasn't like that. Here's a reason why things work and, and our fire, um, crew, um, men and women, um, are experts at what they do, and they did a very good job of, of getting to a fire that was already fully involved. And, um, I want to thank, uh, the chief and, uh, everybody out there who responded, um, and, and took care of it as quickly as they could. Considering, again, that entire fire was fully involved. Um, and our water was working fine, um, nothing was empty, we were, we were good. So I just want to get that on the record that, again, uh, please be cautious when you see things online because oftentimes there's an ounce of, not an ounce of truth to it. Um, and so, uh, the people up here, uh, are more than willing to answer, answer those questions. If we don't have the answers, guess what, we can find them pretty quickly, and we will. Um, and, uh, there's nothing to hide again, so, uh, great job to you guys, you had two big fires in, in a matter of, what, twenty-four hours? Thirteen hours, okay, I'm like, thirteen fires, okay, thirteen hours. Right, I know, yeah, that's, that's, so tomorrow we will have thirteen hundred fires in about three days, so. Um, but just, again, thanks to everybody for doing such a great job. Uh, Chief Heber?
Oh, I'll be very brief, but just want to say, uh, it's good to see everybody here tonight. Uh, that everyone that ran for the election, thank you for putting yourself out there and still being here. We all need good people to work together and make our city better, so thank you. I agree with Phil that Jim and Sam tell the best stories from the golden old days that I've ever heard in my life. And I'm on record of supporting that fact. Uh, Phil, we, we were able to work together with some other people to get the first responders' benefits, survivors' benefits passed. It did not have a, uh, a note to it as an unfounded mandate, but it provided the flat, the platform after we had lost like three law enforcement officers, what seemed like in rapid succession, to include Deputy Micah Flick. Um, his family was literally at risk of not having any insurance that month. And we all, at some level, was a huge oversight, and we were able to, from this part of the state, get that passed to the state level. What I'm also very proud about that is the city of Fountain didn't wait. We made a change to our policies that a fireman or a police officer, were they to die in the line of duty, their family would be covered for two years. So I always tell cops, think about the whole package of how your community supports you, where you want to work at, same for firefighters. Um, we did have a, um, talent show, thank you guest judge for coming, thank you the other judge. We did have thirty people there, we did have seven contestants, that was a pretty good surprise. Whoa, 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 I don't know no videos about Chief Danson, and I can't confirm or deny, I paid money to keep it silent. But we had a good time, and thank you guys both for coming out, and we'll do it again next year and we'll make it even bigger, but it was a really good time for everyone to show it. Had a good time, had a good time, a lot of love put in the love bank, so thank you very much, I'll be, I'll be quiet.
All right, thanks, chief. Uh, let me, IT, anything? Nope, Kristy, anything else? Thank you. Uh, John?
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, the only thing for tonight and on the, um, topic of just information, reliable sources of information, we're working hard to update our website. Uh, we're moving away from some of the just image-based links that kind of get you into the website and trying to pull more stuff onto the main page. So if you go on it this evening even, you'll see it's kind of, kind of, has a new look to it. It's more link-based, trying to pull useful information right to the very front. One of those sections on there are all of the different ways that you can contact the city or engage with the city. And so, uh, encourage everybody to visit the website, we're working hard to update that and have useful and factual information for the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Huffman?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Okay, uh, Ms. Thompson?
John, I did have somebody send me a text tonight during the meeting, they were watching online, and they asked that when the buses are delayed, that we get the information on the Facebook page really fast in the mornings so that they know, you know, if we have a morning delay because of, um, ICE or something. Um, if we could get that out there a little bit faster so they can make different plans.
Mr. Lauer?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Coke?
Nothing.
Mr. Applegate?
Nothing.
Mr. Geek?
I would just like to thank Jim and Phil for all their hard work for the last eight years, many years, many years. And, uh, like to, hope everybody has a nice Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And chief, did you get my email about the person that says I owe him three thousand dollars?
I did, too.
No, now, if I didn't, since I didn't sign it, I.
Okay, thank you. So just some context real quick, we got email, apparently. So just some context real quick. We got email, apparently everyone got one that, that said they put malware into our, whatever it was. And, uh, they, they have pictures of us on porn sites and they're going to, they're going to give it to, we're going, they're going to give it to all our, all of our contacts unless, yeah, unless we pay them three thousand dollars in Bitcoin, um, or some other kind of.
And then it said, it says, I'll be waiting.
Yeah, I'll be waiting.
And since you didn't answer me the first time, I'm going to charge you four thousand dollars now. Did you send it? He's trying, he's trying to get some money before he, before he leaves.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem, anything? All right, again, now, now tomorrow's headline on Facebook's going to be, I don't even want to go there. Okay, um, I do want to wish everyone a very, um, happy and restful, hopefully, Thanksgiving to you and your families. And, and please enjoy that time and, and, um, we'll see you in a few weeks. We're adjourned.